A call to be made to order, we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. Dr. Cash?
Please stand. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Muy buenas tardes y bienvenidos a todos ustedes. Tenemos los aparatos para la interpretación simultánea en español. Creemos que casi todos los que necesitan los aparatos ya los tienen, pero si no los tienen, pueden verlos allá atrás. Gracias.
We have headsets for the hearing impaired if you need them. And we will now go to introductions, proclamations, presentations, or recognitions. Dr. Cash?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Santa Barbara High School Don's Net Cafe students Henry Almongor, Elizabeth Avia, Marcella Montez, and Luis Asienzo are here with us tonight. Santa Barbara High's Volunteer Income Tax Assistance Program was audited by the Internal Revenue this year. VIDA coordinators Amazing Grace Yanos and Henry Almongor underwent an intense hour-long, wow, IRS audit. They're still standing here. They received a perfect score of 100 on 10 different areas. The VIDA students completed 564 tax returns, saving taxpayers a minimum of $84,000 in tax preparation fees, and put $600,000 in refunds back into our community's economy. This year, 32 students became certified tax preparers and volunteered more than 2500 hours in community service. And I know that the students have a few words to add, and we'd ask them to, one or two of them, to come up to the mic and tell us more about the Don's Net Cafe.
So hello, my name is Henry Almongor. I am the current VIDA coordinator. And I just want to give a special thanks to Mr. Cash for always supporting us, our business partners, Montecito Banking Trust, United Way, for always donating each year to this program. And just to thank the community, because without them, and to come in and help us do their tax return, we wouldn't have this recognition. And it's a pleasure giving back to the community and doing some good in the world. And this is just a few of the other businesses we have in the Don's Net Cafe. So thank you.
I know that their teacher, Mrs. Bee, I was trying to see if she's out there, we've got a lot of people, is an inspiration to all of us, her hard work and dedication to students. I want to also thank her for her continued work in our community. Congratulations to these four great students. Our future's in great hands with people like this as our leaders. So, once a Dawn, always a Dawn. Go Dawns! Thank you very much. Great job.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Proud.
Incredible. Hundred percent.
Yeah, good, go!
Great job. Thank you very much.
Great.
Thank you. Wow. Great way to start. I've been told that we will have openings coming up this fall on our bond and parcel tax oversight committees. So if anyone in the audience, or anyone on TV that's watching this, would like to apply and be part of our district's process in ensuring that those bond and parcel tax funds are spent in accordance with the voters' wishes, please contact my office. The avid senior celebration will take place this week at Lacumbra Junior High School, Thursday, April 30th, from 5:30 to 7:30. The public is invited, and the keynote address will be delivered by Santa Barbara County Supervisor Salud Carvajal. Cinco de Mayo is being celebrated at several campuses this week, and the public is welcome to enjoy food, music, dance, and other family activities. And there's a handout at the back of our room with the dates and locations of all of those events. The Harlem Ambassadors Comedy Basketball Team is going to perform a "Stay in School, Stay Off Drugs, and Don't Be a Bully" assembly at Roosevelt Elementary School on May 6th. And unfortunately tonight, I need to conclude with a few words about a very special teacher who passed away. Isabel Hernandez was a teacher's teacher. She nurtured our youngest learners with patience, kindness, compassion, and a wonderful sense of humor. Isabel joined the district in 1996 and taught at Harding School. Then in 2010, she joined the staff at Adams Elementary School after also working at the Santa Barbara Community Academy. She was a mentor teacher. At one point, she was also the president of the Santa Barbara Teachers Association. Generations of kindergartners probably still remember the wonderful teacher who encouraged them, who taught them to share how to play nicely with one another, recognized numbers and letters. And she was also the teacher who dried their tears on that very first day of school. Sadly, Isabel passed away this past Friday night. So please join me in a moment of silence in honor of one of our greatest, Isabel Hernandez. Thank you, and that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Any questions of Dr. Cash? Let's go to board comments and correspondence. Nobody? I'll give a few. We had two great meetings this past, since the last meeting, one with the city of Santa Barbara, City Council, and one with the Cali-NA City Council. Talked about a lot of things of mutual interest, like bike paths and the drought situation. A lot of little things, but it was nice to get together with them, and I'm sure they'll be on the video, anybody who wants to watch it. I also made a visit to ICANN at Adelante, and right now we're in the middle of a lot of ICANN presentations at the various schools. If anyone gets a chance to stop by one of them, the artwork is absolutely unbelievable, and we owe a huge debt of gratitude to the ICANN organization for all that they do. I went to the Santa Barbara Ball, and the Children's Creative Project and the Santa Barbara County Ball put on a program for 4,800 local elementary school students, from Carpenteria to through Cali-NA. We probably had about 1,500 at the event. They did two shows, but over 2,000 people came at 9:30, I mean kids, and they saw a 45-minute show, they left, and as they left, 2,000 more came into the county ball. Two separate pathways, but buses were lined up throughout the downtown area with the ball and the creative project paid for the buses, paid for the event. It was free to 4,800 students. And I did receive one note from a principal, and here's how she described it. "Today's event was awesome. It was inspiring to see all of the students in our community together enjoying music. We are so thankful to the ball and the Children's Creative Project for making this cultural event happen." And to see that many, and most all of them, when asked, "Have you been here before?", raise their hands, "No." I mean, it was an event, an environment that kids in our community just don't see very often. And the music put on by this group from Los Angeles was culturally wonderful, and had a lot of good messages in it. It was a very powerful message to these students. So it was really good. We did have a letter of correspondence from the Santa Barbara County Education Office. The good news is, it agreed with us and gave, that we gave a positive certification for our wonderful budgetary process. And Mrs. Jete and your staff, thank you very much, but it's nice to get the letter saying you're doing a great job. Okay? So, thank you very much for your efforts on that. Okay, no other public comments? Okay, board comments. A closed session item. We did take some action. On A1, student discipline, there was no action on that. It'll come back later on the agenda. B2 was a KC waiver for graduation for a student with disabilities. It was moved by Parker, seconded by Adelman, to approve the KC waiver, and the motion passed unanimously. On B3, public employee appointment, title, elementary principal. It was moved by Parker, seconded by Adelson, to appoint Gabe Sandoval as principal at Cleveland. Mr. Sandoval? I'll ask Dr. Cash to tell us why that recommendation.
Well, Gabe is here. We're very excited. He was the clear choice by the interview panel for the Cleveland Elementary School principal. His tone and approach resonated strongly with all the panel members, especially the student that was on the panel. One of the many reasons Gabe will make a fine leader at Cleveland was his response to the following question. "What do you think will provide you the greatest pleasure in leading a school?" Gabe said, "The greatest pleasure in leading a school will be seeing the growth of the students, the teachers, and the parents. I enjoy the journey of challenge and how it can be overcome through collaboration and passion. I take pleasure in seeing a student reach a goal, a teacher gaining a skill, and a parent becoming more involved in their child's education." Congratulations, Gabe. You're going to do a great job at Cleveland. Enjoy that journey. Sorry, Mr. Beckio.
It's amazing how little things cross your path in life. But I remember the first day I met Gabe, I think it was the first day he was at Adams School. And for some reason, he was head and shoulders about anybody that I've seen in most of my years on the board. You just seem to be a natural. So it's so wonderful. Do you wish to say anything?
Well, I want to thank the board and the district for giving me this opportunity. I'm excited. I don't know if I have Cleveland family here, but I'm excited to meet the students. Okay, there you are. Hola. I'm excited to work with the students, the staff, and the community, and be a part of what makes Cleveland Cleveland. And again, I want to thank you, and I'm excited to continue the work that the board is doing, Dr. Cash, and everyone else that's a part of this community. So I appreciate your support, and thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Right now, we're very fortunate to have a temporary principal there, Marlon Sumter, who was a director with us, us, for many years here. A wonderful gentleman, very nice gentleman, kind gentleman, nice person. And he's doing a great job keeping the school going, and you'll have a good school to take over. So, appreciate it. Do we have any public comments?
We have five. So I'm going to call out the first person, and then the second person, and you'll have three minutes to speak. For the first person up is Christina Mavaro Rosler, and followed by Araceli Sanchez. And I'll give you a 30-second warning.
All right. My name is Christina Mavaro Rosler, and for 13 years, I've been passionate about working in a Title I low-income school, nearly 10 of which have been for the Santa Barbara School District at McKinley. I am also a new parent that is balancing the job of being an inspirational teacher with being an awesome mom. My short-term solution to this was to propose a job share, but about a month ago, I received the devastating news that it was denied. This seems to be happening increasingly throughout our district, and I would like to know why. The fate of my career and family came down to the opinion of our new administrator, who has never seen me teach, and who has no idea what I have contributed to my school community for the past nine years. When approached by our union president, Dr. Cash boasted that no job shares have been granted since he became superintendent, because they are not good for kids. So I've spent the past few weeks researching the literature on job sharing, and have been unable to find support for this claim. On the contrary, what I did find was overwhelmingly positive. The Stanford Graduate School of Education writes that job-share success depends on the commitment of the teachers involved, and that we should be more concerned about the overall quality of the teaching than we are about the organization of the job itself. My research revealed that most of the teachers in these positions are parents of young children. They find that it makes the balancing act of teaching and parenting much simpler, and that they can feel good about occupying both roles, because they do not have to choose between one or the other. The studies found that job-sharing teachers feel more fresh and revitalized in the classroom, required far fewer sick days, and alleviated disruptions with substitute teachers, because they could stand in for each other when one needed to be absent. A rested teacher is a happy, more motivated, and effective teacher. One study used the analogy that most children have two parents, which they love equally, but for two different reasons. Having two teachers is similar, because both adults have the same set of expectations, but have different personalities that the children can accept and learn from. Our district wellness committee met last month and focused on the topic of facilitating workplace wellness. And I feel that if we truly valued the health of our employees and our commitment to all children, we would not be closing the door on this opportunity. Taking away the chance for young parents to devote themselves to both their families and their careers is a tragedy. We need to have the opportunity to be teachers and parents, just like other jobs in other districts allow. If I honestly think about the level of commitment of the average teacher that I know, I can guarantee that our job share would not be 50/50. It would be 60/60. And the students would receive 120% of teachers who are refreshed, motivated, balanced, and happy. Isn't this the ideal scenario to combine forces to better serve our students while affording this opportunity to parents of young children during this precious, fleeting time of their lives? And of course, this isn't just for the convenience of the teachers. We have to make sure we're putting the interest of our children and students first. We all know that we would have to make this work very well. Please at least make it a possibility. Give an opening for dialogue, rather than just saying no, because we'll never get this time back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Araceli Sanchez, followed by Manuel Medina.
I'm going to speak in Spanish. Buenas noches. Miembros de la mesa directiva y todos presentes, mi nombre es Araceli Sanchez. Yo soy una madre de dos niñas en el sistema escolar. Una en tercer grado en la escuela adelante charter school, y una en el grado séptimo en la escuela Santa Barbara Junior High. Estoy asistiendo a la clase de padres adelante de Padres Unidos en la escuela Santa Barbara Junior High. A donde he sido motivada para involucrarme más en la educación de mis hijas. Hoy me gustaría compartir con ustedes algo. Los padres desean elogiar al director Lito García de la Santa Barbara Junior High. Queremos dar las gracias por su empeño y motivación hacia los estudiantes y padres de familia. Por ejemplo, el barbecue de logro académico de cada trimestre sí está funcionando. Esto lo he visto en mi hija. Ella ha sido motivada a mantener sus buenos grados de A y B. El empeño que pone el director hacia el involucramiento de los padres, por ejemplo. El parent luncheon, cuando los padres una vez al mes pueden ir a comer con sus hijos. Él ha ofrecido varias clases, por ejemplo. Proyecto para padres, y está esta clase de padres adelante. La escuela Santa Barbara Junior High tiene el más alto porcentaje de alumnos reclasificados de aprendizaje de inglés a inglés regular. Es importante para los estudiantes de ser reclasificados lo más pronto posible. Así puede avanzar a tener clases más avanzadas que ayudarían para la preparación hacia la universidad. Es importante para el logro académico que el director continúe con el involucramiento y motivación a nuestros estudiantes y padres de familia. El director ha hecho de la escuela un lugar agradable para aprender a lo máximo. Sinceramente, Araceli Sanchez. Gracias.
Good evening, members of the board and all present. My name is Araceli Sanchez, and I am a mother of two girls in the school system. One is in third grade at Adelante Charter School, and one in seventh grade at Santa Barbara Junior High. I'm attending the Padres Unidos class called Padres Adelante at Santa Barbara Junior High School. Today, I would like to share with you something. Parents want to commend Principal Lito García. We want to thank him for his commitment and the motivation he gives to students and parents. For example, the barbecue to recognize academic achievement each quarter. It's working. I've seen this in my daughter. She was motivated to maintain her good grades of As and Bs. We also call attention to the effort of Mr. García, the effort that he places on the involvement of parents. One example is the luncheon, when parents once a month can come to school and eat with their children. He has offered various kinds of classes, including Parent Project and this Padres Adelante class. The Santa Barbara Junior High School has the highest percentage of junior high students of reclassified English learners who are learning English. It's important for students to be reclassified as soon as possible, so they can move on and take more advanced classes that will help them prepare for college. It's important for academic achievement that each principal continues to promote the involvement and motivation of our students and their parents. Mr. Lito García has made the school a pleasant place to maximize learning. Thank you. Araceli Sanchez.
Manuel Medina, followed by Margarita Miguel.
Buenas noches, representantes de la mesa directiva y administradores. Mi nombre es Manuel Medina. Estoy representando al programa Padres Adelante dirigido por Padres Unidos de la escuela Santa Barbara Junior High. Tengo dos estudiantes, en Santa Barbara Junior High y en San Marcos High School. Hoy quiero enfocarme en la seguridad de las escuelas. En particular, en la escuela San Marcos, pues por las mañanas, no hay seguridad en las escuelas... No hay quien dirija el tráfico para los niños cuando cruzan la calle. El tráfico está embotellado, y los niños no respetan la luz roja del semáforo, y corren peligro de ser atropellados. Es necesario dirigir el tráfico para evitar un accidente con un alumno cruzando la calle. También quiero hablar de las drogas en las escuelas en general. A pesar de las buenas iniciativas del distrito escolar, los niños siguen teniendo acceso a drogas en las escuelas y alrededor de las escuelas. Es mi experiencia personal con mi hija, que ha encontrado narcotraficantes quienes han tenido acceso a la escuela. Hijas, graciadamente, ahora está luchando con las consecuencias de este acceso. Les recomiendo pongan más atención, tengan vigilancia, y darnos más información tocante a los recursos disponibles para los padres que están pasando por estas situaciones. Dándose cuenta que los narcotraficantes no se darán por vencidos. Colaboren con los otros padres para que trabajemos juntos en la eliminación de esta plaga en nuestra comunidad. Gracias por su atención, y espero tomen en cuenta mi petición. Manuel Medina, gracias.
Good evening, school board members and administrators. My name is Manuel Medina. I am representing the class Padres Adelante given by Padres Unidos at Santa Barbara Junior High. I have two students, one at Santa Barbara Junior High and the other at San Marcos High School. Today, I want to focus on school safety, especially at San Marcos High School. There's a street safety issue there in the mornings for students crossing the street to get to school. There needs to be someone to direct traffic for kids to cross safely across the street. The problem is that many children do not respect the red light, and they're at risk of being hit. Due to the traffic congestion there in the mornings, it's important that traffic be directed before someone gets hit by a car. I also want to talk about drugs in schools in general. Despite the best efforts of the school district, children still have access to drugs in schools and around schools. It's my personal experience with my daughter, who has encountered drug dealers who have had access to her school. My daughter, unfortunately, is now struggling with the consequences of this access. I recommend you devote more attention and surveillance to this, knowing that the drug dealers are out there, and they will never give up. Work with us parents to provide the information we need about available resources, which are available to parents who are going through these situations. Let's work together to eliminate this scourge in our community. Thanks for listening, and I hope you take into account my request. Manuel Medina.
Margarita Miguel, followed by María Espinoza.
Buenas noches a todos los presentes. Mi nombre es Margarita Miguel, y soy madre de dos jóvenes en las escuelas Cleveland y Santa Barbara Junior High. Y asisto a la clase de padres adelante en la escuela Santa Barbara Junior High. Hoy vengo a representar y recomendar un punto muy importante, que es proporcionar más fondos a las escuelas sobre programas de ayuda después de la escuela. Estos programas están comprobados para subir el logro académico de los alumnos, especialmente los que están atrasados y necesitan una ayuda para alcanzar sus metas y logros. Esto les ayudará a poder asistir a clases avanzadas y llegar a un colegio o a una universidad, que es lo que muchos padres de familia esperamos que nuestros hijos asistan. Hoy ellos son nuestro futuro, y si no los ayudamos, ¿quién lo hará? Muchas gracias por su apreciable tiempo, y esto es muy importante. Gracias.
Good evening to all present. My name is Margarita Miguel, and I am a mother of two students, one at Cleveland and one at Santa Barbara Junior High. I am here with Padres Adelante, and I'm taking the class at Santa Barbara Junior High. Today, I come to represent and recommend a very important point, which is to provide more funds through LCAP for after-school support programs for students. These programs are proven to increase the academic achievement of students, especially those who are behind and need help to reach their goals and achievements. This will help them to attend advanced classes and get to a college or university, which is the shared goal for many of our parents. They are our future, so if we don't help them, who will? Thank you very much for your valuable time. This is a very important issue. Margarita Miguel.
Olga Mendoza? Gracias.
Buenas tardes, miembros de la Mesa Directiva de Educación del Distrito de Santa Barbara. Mi nombre es Olga Mendoza, madre de dos hijas en el distrito. Vengo representando a la clase de padres adelante ofrecido por Padres Unidos en la escuela Santa Barbara Junior High. El motivo de esta carta es para pedirles que en su presupuesto para LCAP, para el año escolar entrante, tengan en consideración implementar más programas de tutoría para después de escuela. Con estos nuevos estándares de educación que últimamente han estado ejerciendo, nosotros como padres no tenemos la capacitación adecuada para ayudar a nuestros hijos en casa. ¿Es realmente necesario e importante que nuestros hijos comprendan y realicen sus tareas y actividades con éxito para un mayor rendimiento escolar? Yo, como madre latina, mi idioma es diferente al que ellos están aprendiendo, y se me dificulta ayudarles. Les estaría muy agradecida si entre sus propuestas sean considerados tutoría para las escuelas en su distrito escolar. Muchas gracias.
Good afternoon, members of the Board of Education for the Santa Barbara Unified School District. My name is Olga Ruiz, a mother of two children in the district. I come representing the class Padres Adelante offered by Padres Unidos at Santa Barbara Junior High. The reason for this letter is to ask that in your LCAP budget for next school year, take into account or take into consideration implementing more programs for after-school tutoring. With these new academic standards, which the schools have recently been carrying out, we as parents do not have adequate training to help our children at home. It is necessary and important that our children understand and successfully fulfill their assignments and tasks, so that their school achievement will increase. For me, as a Latina mother, my language is different from what the students are learning, and it is difficult for me to help them.
We would be very grateful if among the proposals for next year you consider expanding tutoring for the schools in our district. Thank you very much. Olga Ruiz.
Thank you all. Just to make sure you all understand the way we have to operate up here is we hear these ideas under public comment, but we really can't respond very much to them. Although everyone up here probably would, could pick out something they'd like to respond to and carry on a discussion. But because they're not on our actual calendar, we have to hear them and take them into consideration. I know Dr. Cash just took a lot of notes. He got those notes out to us and remind us of all the good things that were said. So we really appreciate the input and we are concerned up here about all these issues and hopefully we can look into them and maybe do something about them. So, thank you very much. Before I go on, I would like to mention a couple change, well, three things. First, a couple changes. On item G four, that will be removed from the agenda. We did not have all the backup on that. And our accountant, who is going to be giving us the results of the audit on H-12, unfortunately has to go back to LA tonight, poor guy. And so I'm going to move him up to H, just behind H-one. So H-12 will move to H-one.
Mr. Herron, also, H-eight is going to be removed. We have some additional information. We discovered that is going to help require us to modify that. So that'll be back later this spring.
H-eight.
Yes.
And then just one general thing, I forgot to, I'm going to take the liberty of going back to board comments. With all this going on right now in Baltimore, it makes me think seriously about our schools. We have high schools and when I hear that high school students are out on the streets doing terrible things, as, as a group, it looks like, school got out and they, and they went wild. I hope that is not something that even is possible in our community, but things happen in every community. And I know, Dr. Cash, you believe that every single student should not be anonymous, that somebody in our system should be friends and confidants of every single student. And I just hope that's reiterated because if, if our students feel like somebody cares about them, they're not apt to do those kinds of things as much. So if, if our entire staff can reach out to somebody who looks lonely, who's somebody who's not doing well, has a normal course of their business, I think we all would appreciate it. So thank you very much. We will now go to acceptance of donations, D-A.
I move to accept with gratitude.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We'll go now to the consent calendar. Is there anything anybody would like to remove? Ms. Idelson?
I'd like to pull E-nine for some questions.
Okay, we'll bring that back up at the, is it, is it a major question, minor question?
Just inquiry.
Inquiry. We'll, we'll get back to that later then, okay? And anybody else to have a motion?
I'd like to move the consent agenda minus E-nine.
I will second, but I do want to comment. I have to comment on the human resources recommendations list. There is a teacher there from Harding School, Mrs. Karen D'Alfonso, who is retiring after 37 years. And I couldn't let that go unnoticed because she was my second grade teacher. And she is someone who I, since I've been back in the district, I've been going to her classroom every year to read to her students, to talk to her students. So it's bittersweet for me to see Mrs. D'Alfonso, that I know she says to call her Karen, but she's always Mrs. D'Alfonso to me. So I just want to really acknowledge her and her 37 years of service to students across this district. That's a really big deal for me, so.
Could we turn that into a Common Core math study to figure out how old you are? Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We'll come back to E-nine at a later time. We have no public hearing. We will now go to the action items. And the first one is a G-one, the Board Action Student Discipline Education Code four-nine, four-eight-nine-one-B with case number two-fourteen fifteen dash twenty-eight.
In case twenty-fourteen fifteen dash twenty-eight, I move to approve the stipulated agreement for a school year expulsion ending January 2016.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. We will now go to B-two, approval of the Resolution twenty-fourteen fifteen thirty-two designating May eighteenth, 2015 as Employee Appreciation Day.
We'll ask Dr. Christensen to take the next three.
Okay. Good evening. Each year the district designates one day as Employee Appreciation Day in order to honor the contributions of our wonderful certificated and classified staff. Employee Appreciation Day this year is May eighteenth and the occasion will be marked with an event at the Cabrillo Arts Pavilion. It is our recommendation that the Board approves Resolution two thousand fourteen slash two thousand fifteen dash thirty-two designating May eighteenth as Employee Appreciation Day.
Who would like to read the resolution? Dr. Christensen? Oh, no, Dr. Paz.
Whereas, sorry. Whereas the children of California represent the future and the most significant resource of our state and whereas an educated citizenry serves as a foundation of our democracy and whereas the public school system of the state of California bears responsibility for properly preparing children for the roles they will play in tomorrow's world and whereas the certificated staff in the Santa Barbara Unified School District teach the vital lessons that enable our students to mature and reach their greatest potential, provide good teaching that grows in value and pays dividends far beyond the classroom, mold the minds and train the workforce of the future and touch many people with lasting effect and whereas the classified employees in the Santa Barbara Unified School District provide valuable services to the schools and students, contribute to the establishment and promotion of a positive instructional environment, serve a vital role in providing for the welfare, safety of students and strive for excellence in all areas relative to the educational community and whereas leadership matters for California's public education system and research shows that great schools and school districts are led by great principals, district office administrators and superintendent. And whereas school administrators in the Santa Barbara Unified School District are passionate lifelong learners who believe in the value of quality public education and depend on a network of support from the entire school community to promote ongoing student achievement and success. Now, therefore, the Board of Education of the Santa Barbara Unified School District does hereby resolve to observe May eighteenth, 2015 as Employee Appreciation Day in honor of the dedicated certificated and classified employees of the district and appreciation of the positive influence they have upon the lives of the youth in our district. Approved, passed and adopted this twenty-eighth day of April, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Can you leave it up for a second, under discussion? Just want to point out that this talks about our certificated staff, staff in one whereas, and then it talks about classified employees, then it talks about leadership in the administrative field. One sentence stood out to me and it really affects all three of those categories because without teachers, staff and administrative, and they all are passionate, all are lifelong learners who believe in the value of quality public education. So all of those three organizations or three groups of people make our system run and they do a great job, which makes our job so much easier. So we appreciate all of them and we'll show that appreciation on this day that I think is May eighteenth, that we'll recognize them. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, passed absolutely unanimously. Thank you very much to all three of our key supporters in this district. Okay, B-three, approved Resolution, Resolution twenty-fourteen fifteen dash thirty-three regarding the elimination or reduction of classified services.
Yes, Education Code Sections four-five-one-one-seven and four-five-three-zero-eight allow classified employees to be laid off for lack of work or lack of funds. The positions identified on this resolution are funded from a variety of categorical funds and because the availability of these funds is uncertain at this time, it is prudent to issue layoff notices now. If funding for these positions becomes available, the layoff notices will be rescinded. It is our recommendation that the Board approve Resolution two thousand fourteen slash two thousand fifteen dash thirty-three.
Discussion, a motion? Let's go for a motion, then we'll do discussion.
All right, so moved. Seconded.
Okay, under discussion, Ms. Parker?
Just that I, I, in looking at the list, this is one of those things where I, I know that the vast majority of them will have their layoffs rescinded and I hate the stress that they go over as part of this process. I recognize that this is something that we do every year, but I hope that we can rescind these layoffs as quickly as possible.
Ms. Lemon?
On that note too, once we know and perhaps it's going to be closer, you know, after, closer to the start of the school year, I would like to know just what percentages, what percentage of those individuals on this list came back to us, so that maybe could come to us in a board report of sorts.
Ms. Idelson?
And why is the list so predominated by curriculum specialists? Is that just?
Well, they're paid for out of site funds and the sites have to make those decisions. We don't make them at the district office.
A similar question. There's so many of these that are just a partial time period. Are they working, are they, is this just a portion of their job that's being laid off? Or are these all people, do we have people working point-two-five percent of the time and that person's being laid off?
Yeah, we do.
Can you, so describe what type of person, what is hired for these, all these short little timeframes? Point-three-seven-five, point-five, point-four-seven-five, point-two-five?
Somebody that does yard duty, somebody that works as an instructional assistant, somebody that has a variety of tasks on either one site or multiple sites and it could be a combination of both, that's their entire position or it is a portion of their position.
Well, that's what I'm getting, I'm asking, are there some, this is a portion of, that are still hired by us doing other things?
Correct.
And that, that's, I didn't understand that. That's my question is, so this is not absolute layoff of every one of these people. It's part of their, in some cases, it's part of their job that was eliminated, but they still have another part of their job possibly?
Correct.
Okay.
And just for timeline purposes, when would the sites know who they're bringing back?
Between now and the start of the school year.
Which, okay.
Once, we don't know what the budget is at this particular point. We'll find out, well, we hope we'll find out in May with the May revise from the governor, but we really won't know until legislature passes the budget, which won't be till June.
So likely it won't be now then, it will be more like in July, starting.
And I noticed a lot of these are paraeducators and I read the minutes of the CPAC meeting and I guess you had a big discussion there about quantity versus quality and then the need for quality. But I understand it, we have a need for paraeducators come the first of the year. And so I presume it'd be before the first of the year that we'll find out if some of these come back, if we have a need for them.
Well, we will, we will. And invariably, we end up bringing them all back because we have a number of people leave.
Yeah, I mean, it just, I, I hate to see all the paraeducators when in fact for every year I've been on this board, school starts and we need para, paraeducators. So hopefully that all works out very nicely, so thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. G-four has been eliminated, so we're under G-five, the second reading of Board Policy and Administration Regulation twelve forty, Volunteer Assistance. Dr. Cash?
Dr. Christensen?
Yes, we discussed this, we had the first reading at our last board meeting and this board policy is coming back to you, the policy on volunteer assistance for the second reading. And again, we have worked to revise this in accordance with some of the recommendations by the California School Boards Association. So this is your second view and it is our recommendation that you approve this board policy and AR.
Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Board, the Board Policy and Administration Regulation twelve forty, Volunteer Assistance.
I'll second that.
Under discussion? I know it was brought back as an action item because maybe there might be discussion, so. Can you show, scroll down and show us what the change, are the changes highlighted on this one?
They were highlighted on the last one.
Yeah, not on here though, that's one of the.
We had conversation, I think.
Right, but now for all of us to remember what we talked about two weeks ago is sometimes hard. So sometimes this, this system, for us not to see what we saw last two weeks ago makes it, makes it hard, but I know somebody had questions, so. Ms. Idelson?
On one of them, it's showing the matrix.
That's the exhibit, I believe.
That was the exhibit.
And did anything change on that from prior? Okay, so as far as the TB test clearance, does that reflect now what has changed that they do a assessment? Okay. And will that be something that requires physician input or just the person answers a questionnaire?
No, it requires a medical professional to sign off on it.
But not a TB test or?
Right, and then there, there's some, still some conversation going on in our county and some guidelines that have yet to be released on that specific thing because there were some concerns with the assessment itself. But it is in fact permissible to have the assessment instead of the TB test.
Okay.
So we're covering it in all ways so we can do either or and then when we get the guidelines, we can go that direction. The whole idea was, at the state level, is to save money.
Okay, but will it still require the volunteer to visit a physician's office?
Yes, a medical person has got to sign off on it. It can't just be a question and answer that non-medical person, yes.
And who will have that burden of cost? Will that be the district?
That would be the district and it's not much less money than the TB test itself.
Okay, interesting. So it's still a pretty major hassle factor for?
It is.
It still is.
All right. And will there be, I'm not seeing here a description of that? Will that be a separate form?
The, the assessment?
The TB, what the volunteer needs to go do to volunteer for something, say a overnight chaperone?
Well, that was on the matrix as an exhibit the last time. It's not part of the AR or the BP.
Okay, so it's just called a tuberculosis clearance, that's what I see. Okay, but what that clearance involves, will that be defined on something else?
It, it will be defined as a, as a clearance or an assessment.
Okay.
And as soon as we get the word from the county, we will.
Have that available?
Have that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
There are questions about the questions in the assessment.
I think it was this document, someplace in this document, I think I saw a statement that for an overnight trip, you do need a TB.
And it's right there.
Yeah, it's in there.
That chaperone for overnight field trip?
But I saw it also in the, in the language of the policy someplace, I believe.
Yes, but it talked about this.
Right.
It went from being a TB test to being a TB clearance. But the fact that it's a clearance and still requires physician.
It does.
Release is in many ways the same deal, only maybe they don't have to revisit the physician forty-eight hours later?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
That's the substantive difference.
Good, all right.
But it still costs money and it still has to be a medical professional.
Okay.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. We'll now go to G-six, approval of the twenty-fourteen fifty agreement between the Master of Arts in Training Program at Longi School and Music Bard College in Santa Barbara Unified School District.
Again, Dr. Christensen.
This MOU will allow a student studying music to work with one of our teachers at Galita Valley Junior High School. The teacher is willing to do that. We're excited to have this MOU and it is our recommendation that you approve the agreement between the Master of Arts in Teaching Program at Longi School of Music, School of Music Bard College and the Santa Barbara School District.
Ms. Parker?
I noticed that there's an honorarium with this agreement and I, I certainly know that we have had the SPTA and other, and teachers talk on this and the idea of having honorariums for master teachers, but I don't know if we, do we have other universities, colleges that we're working with? You know, sort of what percentage are, are doing this honorarium idea and what are not?
Well, I don't know the percentage, but I know that some do, some don't, and it varies.
It just, you're seeing the way.
From nothing to.
We, we, we did, the Board requested that within the last. We, we did, the board requested that within the last couple of years, and I provided that to you, I'm trying to think it was, fewer were doing it than were not, were giving a stipend than were giving.
Than were giving, okay, all right, thank you, well, I, I think it's, it's great, and I certainly know, my gosh, the master teachers put so much of their heart and time into helping these new students come into the field, so I appreciate the opportunity, great.
Do I have a motion to approve G6, the agreement?
So moved.
Seconded.
Just further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Seven, Approval of Santa Barbara Unified School District Library Master Plan for Secondary Schools.
Would ask Dr. Drotty to come forward. I see we have, if not all, I think we have them all, there's some in the back.
Separated themselves to confuse us.
I saw all our advanced students in the second row.
Good evening, Government Board Members, President Herron. The Library Master Plan is a document that's put together where our awesome librarians, like Dr. Cash mentioned, and it's a yearly process in which you approve the master plan, but what, for this year, I want to call your attention to three, three items. The first item is basically a focus area on the Common Core implementation, and we feel that our, we feel, administration, the teachers, and the librarians feel that library is very critical as we try to implement the Common Core, that we acquire materials, resources necessary to support our teachers, so you'll see a focus on that in this year's master plan. A second item I want you to pay attention to is that although we have always allocated funds to libraries, they have a lot that they have to deal with, and at some point, sometimes when they're trying to allocate, allocate resources, they, they use some of the library funds to help support in other areas of school needs, and this year, we made sure that through administration and discussions with them, that the funds that they were received were strictly for their acquisition of materials for the library, and so with that said, you'll notice that here, you'll see that we put, we allocated 15,000 for all junior high school sites each, we also allocate 35,000 for each high school. Did we adjust that, Mrs., 3,500? I'm sorry, you know what, let me get back to you on that.
I think, I think this is a wish list in here, and it still has to go through the Common Core and budgetary process, so...
Yes, yes.
L cap.
My apologies, let me, let me backtrack.
I think that's what you're shaking.
The L cap, in the L cap, which you will see later, not today, but another time, is you'll see that we have allocated funds for those, those areas as described. Also, you'll see that we have also allocated funds for elementary libraries in terms of materials as well, and also two positions that we want to put into elementary schools to help support their libraries in that work. Like I said, it's not, that hasn't been, you haven't approved that yet, but you will see that in the budget when, when the L cap comes before you. With that said, I have the awesome librarians here, they can help me answer questions that you may have.
Questions, Ms. Parker?
I, I think this is great, I'm glad that this is finally like on a, on an actual action agenda for us to really talk about in detail, since we often see the individual plans coming to us on a, sorry, on the consent agenda, and so kind of have to briefly call that out, so it's great to see it in this format, and also, it just feels like a sea change from before I was on the board and when I first came on the board, in terms of the attention that's being paid to library services for all of our students now, because I just think it's so important, and I am, yes, totally biased as librarian myself. One of the things that I just wanted to call out, I think it's a great plan, and I hope that as we see the L cap come forward, that we do see the consistency that we've been looking for in terms of funding across the, across the schools for their libraries. In the document, there is a really nice crosswalk of the way the, sort of the model school library standards and the AASL standards can support the Common Core, and we know for Common Core Language Arts and Writing that that is across all subject areas, and so librarians are really a huge resource for teachers, but I wanted to call out a number of them, so a number of the library standards support the writing, the Common Core writing standards, particularly seven and eight, which are about research projects. Eight in particular is about making sure that students understand what plagiarism is and how to avoid plagiarism, and how to cite, and for high school in particular, it's how to cite, California has inserted this piece that says how to cite using footnotes and endnotes, and of course, a lot of our teachers use the MLA style, which would use parenthetical citation, in-text citation, and I think it can be easy in documents like this, just to have these numbers referring to, you know, that refers to Common Core Writing Center seven, whatever that is, and we gloss over it, but I really hope that at each site, there is an opportunity for faculty across disciplines to really talk about what this means, and to give librarians the time to help them teach students to have them actually do short research projects that include in-text citation, so that students have the opportunity at every single one of our high schools to come out meeting the Common Core standards. I think a lot of times, with the best of intentions, either teachers run out of time or librarians just aren't given the time, and that speaks to us probably not having enough librarians in the district, but that's a different story, and so I hope that that's going on at the site level, but it's great to have a unified master plan for all of the schools.
Absolutely, thank you. Well, for the time I've been on the board since 2008, every year, we look at the Library Master Plan, and every year, I comment on the money request, this is the first time I've seen it in a 15,000 and 35,000 per school. In the past, it's always been $12 per ADA for junior highs and $15 per ADA for high schools. I don't think they ever got that, but that's what has been every plan, so it's good to hear that this is going to be part of the L cap process, and that somehow there'll be dollars absolutely allocated towards this. I think most of our high schools are pretty much dominated or staffed equally with students. Junior highs are a little bit more fluctuating, and the ADA seems to be a better way to judge fairness than lump sums, but I'd be interested in hearing more about that some point, but as long as some money in L cap is allocated for the specific purpose of libraries, I'm absolutely in favor of it.
Absolutely, and the formula we use for this is basically our conversation with the librarians based on what they need, and I thought they did a great job of articulating what their needs are to Dr. Cash.
They've always done that.
Yeah, so...
We're listening.
We're listening.
Finally, we're listening, okay. Anything else? Do I have a motion to approve the master, Library Master Plan for secondary schools?
I'll move the approval of the Santa Barbara Unified School District's Library Master Plan for secondary schools.
Seconded.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No one? Passed unanimously.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much back there, you can say something if you want to.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll now go to the conference agenda, and those of you who would like to leave, feel free to leave, okay? We will now move to the Santa Barbara High School Peabody Stadium update.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. As everyone knows, Peabody Stadium is an iconic structure in our community, it's been graced by hundreds of thousands, perhaps millions of Americans, including several sitting here with me tonight at the dais, either there personally, or there with a relative or a child, and it is, I believe, the biggest project that we have, and maybe the biggest project we'll, we'll have, is the renovation of Peabody Stadium, and tonight, we have Principal John Beckio and his team, the Santa Barbara High Foundation, to give us an update.
Thank you, that usually doesn't happen to me when I come up to the podium to speak, everyone leaves the room, for the record, is that usually you? Mr. President, Board Members, Dr. Cash and superintendents, thank you for giving us the time tonight. Four years ago, I was then the new principal at Santa Barbara High School, went down to the stadium, Peabody Stadium, and I quickly realized two things, one was it's a unbelievable space for student learning, and the second thing that I quickly realized was that it was in very, very, very poor condition, and it didn't take long for me to recognize that many of our athletes do not utilize the field that they actually play on, so they do not practice on the field they play on, it's very much underutilized. I also recognized that many of our PE, actually, all of our PE classes do not use the track facility for the type of fitness that we really should have happening in PE classes. And so, at that time, we, you know, I engaged in a conversation with the Foundation for Santa Barbara High, they have always been interested in the track and field, and doing something to upgrade the track and field, so we re-engaged in conversation with Dave Hetjung, Carl Mayrose, KBZ Architects, and, and then Kelly Coltrip came on later, but we, we kind of banged our heads together to figure out what can we do about the track and field at Santa Barbara High, and so that was a couple-year process of trying to see all the configurations, and what ended up happening is we, you know, through the leadership of Dr. Cash, we actually created this wonderful partnership with the school board, and your guys' leadership and your partnership with us has been instrumental, I think Katie will speak to that when she comes up, and I'll let her do that, but I wanted to publicly acknowledge that, knowing the need in Peabody Stadium, and knowing that we would never be able to do this project without the school board coming on board to this project and making the actual grandstands a part of redoing the entire space, because we could not do the track and field unless we deal with the grandstand, so I just wanted to reiterate to you that I appreciate your leadership, it's going to have a huge impact on our school community, but I think what we're going to see is an unbelievably positive impact on our community, and so I look forward to that, but at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Katie to update you on where we're at with the Peabody Stadium project, thank you.
Hello, Board, thank you for having me again come back today, I wanted to reiterate what John said, your leadership in this project has been front and center with all of our discussions with donors to date, it basically opens the door to them, without your being behind this project, there would be no project, so first of all, thank you for having the confidence and the vision to partner with us on this, because it really is the basis from which we are growing, so first of all, thank you. I also want to thank Dave Hetjung, who is somewhere here, for being along with the process, he's, he's been wonderful, as has Kelly Coltrip this entire time, thank you also, Dr. Cash has come to several of our campaign cabinet meetings, so thank you to you for coming, no one is here from KBZ, but I do want to acknowledge that they have been a wonderful partner for us as well. So as you know, I'm just going to review really quickly, the project is a 12.7 million dollar project that is going to replace the grandstands, put a new synthetic track in, and a new artificial turf field, it is a huge civil engineering feat with many things coming together, so this is a 12.7 million dollar project, the, between what the district is providing from board bond funds, and the state is providing, that's 7 million, and the foundation is raising that gap of 5 million. So last we talked, back in October, we had just begun our fundraising campaign, and I am thrilled, humbled, and a little relieved, I will admit, that we have now reached 2,731,000 dollars towards our goal. That would not have been possible without the leadership and the general respect in the community of one person, which is our campaign chair, Greg Tebby, class of 1981, who has been behind the whole project and is really coalescing our group of donors. So so far, we really have about 40 donors, that's a small number to start with, the campaign has been, really consists of one-on-one meetings with people and one-on-one asks, we have a signature golf cart tour that we do, that I would love to have each and every one of you join me on, so I can show you what we do, and at the end of our tour, we give everyone one of our fundraising brochures, and of course, we ask them, so I'm going to hand this to you afterwards. So in the, the last six months have been small, private kinds of things, and today, as we've reached our halfway mark, or actually, as we've cleared the halfway mark going forward, we'll do a lot more public kinds of announcements, we did do a press release today, because we were coming to talk with you, and we are publicly saying that we are more than halfway to our goal, and the next part of the campaign, as I said, is going to be much more public, so you can make donations through our website, www.foundationforsbhs.org. I wanted to share one other thing with you, which is a great little clip that two of our students made for us, so Alessio Morales, who is a student at MAD, and Zach Parent, who is our pep, pep and rally guy?
Yes.
Our pep and rally guy, who put this together with very little direction, they got a drone, they were very self-directed, as all dons are, to do this, and let me just share this with you, you can also see it on our website, but it's, it's fun, so.
Hi, my name is Amiyan.
My name is Dallas Brennan.
My name is Loria Esposito.
My name is Brett Perez.
I'm Angelina Ortiz.
I'm Nico Foray.
My name is Sophia Perez.
My name is Nigel, I'm a ninth grader.
I'm an 11th grader.
I'm a ninth grader at Santa Barbara High School, senior at Santa Barbara High School.
I'm a ninth grader, and I'm a two.
I run varsity cross country and track and field.
I've been playing soccer since I was six.
And I'm captain of Santa Barbara Dolphins Cross.
My name is Rudy Barra, class of 1976, played soccer at Santa Barbara High School, and I'm the athletic equipment manager.
I'm John Beckio, principal at Santa Barbara High School.
I would like a new field here at ASB, because...
Football plays on it prior to soccer, so it's just trash.
The grass is really bumpy, it affects the game.
For football, whatever sport you get, you can't practice on the upper field, because we don't want to ruin it up.
Like, we'll have football on the field, and we'll be trying to throw, and we're trying not to hit anybody.
Different groups over the last two decades, looking at that stadium and the need for renovation now.
Today, we just went running for cheer. Our track is currently torn up, and it is broken in so many places that it hurts when you run, and lots of cheerleaders trip all the time.
The track is like terrible, you can't run around, and I really can't work out it.
Chipmunks and...
This is a once-in-a-century project.
It's definitely an outdated facility.
The sizing is off, also the shape is too oval.
The first thing they see is going to be our stadium, and we want it to be impressive.
We're not allowed to hold the track.
It's a new seating, more people would want to come to the games and...
Meet and competition in CIS.
Spanish-style architecture.
There's a lot of tradition that people are, you know, bummed about losing.
It's coming down for the right reason.
Create a space where our community can play sports, and we are able to open the doors of our stadium to the, not just our school community, but Santa Barbara as a whole.
So please, help us build it.
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 That's awesome.
And I forgot to thank John Beckio, who comes on so many golf cart tours with me and charms everybody, so I need to give him a lot of credit for us, for our success today, so do you have any questions for me?
One thing, you didn't mention the ADA disability, I know with the current stadium, it's not up to a code, right?
Yeah.
There's no way to get...
The ADA, it's going to be amazing for people with disabilities, so there is a new walkway that starts at the ticket booth, and comes all the way along the hillside and switches back so that you can get to the field, so that is a requirement, but the grandstands itself, you'll be able to wheel a wheelchair from Figaroa straight into the top of the stadium, and there is handicap seating all the way along the top, and companion seats for them, as well as companion seats and ADA accessible seats on the bottom of the stadium, too, so it's completely built in KBZ. KBZ did a wonderful job integrating all of that. Kelly or Dave could probably speak to that, the project elements better, because this is part of our partnership, is they are doing the project, and they know the insides of it, and I'm raising the funds for it. And we can give them input, but really, it's the district's project with John. And it's been a great working relationship because that's really the school and the district's property, and we're just helping make it happen. So, Dave might be able to answer those questions a little better.
Well, I mention this because a parent asked me, you know, at graduation coming up, they have somebody disabled. And so, the question was, where do they go? How do they watch the graduation? And I basically responded with, it's very difficult.
Well, actually, any person that...
I mean, the current situation.
The current situation is if you call the school and let them know that you have a need, there's a special list that your person can go on, and they come in through the water polo gates, and they sit along the field.
Right.
So, they've done that for several years, so that, we do that every year, correct?
Yes. So, anyway, I just wanted to remark that...
But when we build it, it's going to be very accessible.
Tremendous, right.
Ms. Lemon?
And just for clarity, the 2015 class gets to graduate in Peabody Stadium. It's the 2016?
Yes, as long as we are making our fundraising marks and construction is on schedule. The construction will begin after the football season in the fall, and I believe that we are still on schedule with that, and it's going to be a year-plus. So, the one graduation that will be relocated is 2016, planned.
One, I just want to comment on the video. I thought the video was sad, but excellent, well-done. And I appreciate just all the students that came together to do that.
It was completely student-done. I basically gave them five minutes of what we were doing, and they took that and came up with this, so.
Always impressed by student work.
Really impressive, yeah.
Anybody else? Ms. Parker?
I'll just say, because I can see it, you know, 50 years from now, that there's going to be some special ceremony for the sad class of 2016 who didn't get to walk the hill. There'll be press coverage, so it's, you know, it'll come back to them. I have faith that they'll get their chance. It may be decades out, but they'll get it to walk down that hill, but...
That's a great idea.
What is the plan for 2016?
So, the plan is still, I've met with a group of students from, they would be juniors this year. I've met with a class, or a group of students from that class, and we just kind of talked about ideas. First, we talked through the fact that there wouldn't be a graduation in Peabody Stadium for them, and it took them some time to kind of, they wanted to pass it on to the sophomore and freshman class. So, I kind of talked through that line of reasoning of why that would be the same thing, and I'd probably be meeting with a different group of students over the same topic. But then, then we talked about ideas in town of where we can have a ceremony, and we didn't really land on anything in particular. We threw around a bunch of ideas, and we're going to get back together and start planning that.
Yeah, well, it's great to hear that they're very much a part of that process.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Wonderful job. It sounds fantastic.
Thank you. We actually have a campaign, fundraising campaign folder for each of you tonight.
I have one.
Thank you.
And Katie, thank you for acknowledging Greg Tebby's efforts here. He has just stepped up to the plate and hit a grand slam on this. He is really doing whatever it takes to make this project a reality. Thank you, Greg.
We expect another $2.3 million, though, okay?
They know. They know.
Okay, we will now go to H12 Actuarial Report of Post-Retirement Benefits as of July 1, 2013.
Would ask Meg Jete to introduce this item.
Good evening, Board members. Tonight, I'd like to announce Brad Ow, who works for Aon Hewitt from Los Angeles. Brad's been doing our actuarial study since I've been here, since we first met him in 2009. He has over 20 years of experience consulting on various employee benefit and retirement programs. A significant portion of Brad's time has been spent in the public sector. He has experience working with all department, departmental groups, state, county, and municipal governments, as well as legislative bodies, and understands the pertinent issue for each. In addition, he has spoken on retirement topics for the public sector and industry of groups. So, we have to do this actuarial study every two years. So, we just did 2013, as you're very well aware of, that we have gone through two financial systems in the past couple of years. So, we kind of put this one off a little bit, but now it's done for 2013, and we are already acting proactively, getting 2015 ready. So, you will see another one probably by September, October of 2015. So, with that, I'll let Brad explain to you what this actuarial is.
Thank you, Board and superintendents, for having me here, and special thanks, and much appreciation for moving me on the agenda and consideration for my travel plans. Much appreciated. I think we have about 10 minutes, so I'll try to get through this quickly, and hopefully I won't sound like I'm rushing too much, but feel free to ask any questions. The first slide here is, kind of just gives some background on GASB, OPEB. GASB are the accounting standards that we follow. OPEB is Other Post-Employment Benefits, essentially retiree medical benefits. There's some details on some upcoming slides. It impacts all public sector entities, and it's been in place for the district since 2009. And let's see, down at the bottom, we talk about what we do in principle. Kind of our starting point is determine the liabilities under the plans. The actuarial liabilities, essentially what we do is determine what the value of the benefits at the current time are. We're looking at both actives, so, well, retirees currently receiving benefits, and actives to the extent that we expect them to eventually receive benefits. Our projections consider the likelihood of how long people, your employees will continue working, when they'll retire, and then how long they live, and also, to the extent it 's impacted, impacts the cost, what future healthcare trends are. And then, finally, I'm going to get back to this also. One of the key items is the discount rate basis, which is based on the expected return on investments, if there are any. And then, if there are not, we look at, right now, the current standards, look at current district assets. Thank you. So, here's a very brief summary. I think the report is available to you. A very brief summary of our benefits for certificate-in-classified, essentially a fixed-dollar benefit to age 65. And then, management and confidential are some percentage of the premiums are paid for lifetime, and these benefits stopped for, essentially closed or frozen for hires after 2010 in the management and confidential ranks. And then, there are a lot of other special grandfathered benefits that are in there, but detailed in the report.
A question on that slide.
Yeah.
Must be hired before May 1. Is that hired into the school district regardless of what they came in as, or is it management that is, that takes a new job after May 1?
Meg, do you want to...
It's if you were a manager as of May 1, 2010, but you, but we cut it off at that point, and because we basically have to stop the bleeding because this was a very expensive program. So, we stopped it as of May 1, and we tiered the people who had already been here previously.
If somebody was a teacher in April and became a manager May 1, after, I mean, April, in April, they might have been working with us for five or six years as a teacher, and then they moved into management. Is it the date they moved into management that triggers this, or when they were a teacher? Because they were hired before May 1.
It was their status as an administrator, confidential person as of May 1.
Okay, so, somebody who moved through the ranks...
And moved after May 1 is not eligible.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. This sort of gives a picture of what we're looking at. Essentially, what we do, we take all those factors that were on the earlier page. We project out expected benefit payments or cash flows into the future based on all of our assumptions, and we take those cash flows, and we discount them back to today to get a present value, okay? That present value of benefits is sort of the whole pie, and then, according to certain methodologies that are prescribed, we allocate those liabilities to past service and future service. Okay, so, this is kind of, this is at the core of what we do, and what you see is most of the liabilities, and this will increase over time because the management benefits are frozen, but most of the liabilities are already accrued or attributed to service rendered to date. And so, that's the 84%. And then, you have the future. There's rounding, adds up to 101%. That doesn't mean I'm a bad actuary, just, but when we take that sliver, that's how much we're going to be earning into the future, your participants will be earning in the future. Next slide. The, I thought this was important, the evolving accounting standards. So, before GASB, so, you know, five or six years ago, we came to you, and the district was doing what's referred to as pay-as-you-go, not only funding, but accounting. And that's if we had a half a million dollars in retiree expenses for the year, that's what the obligation was, or that's what the expense accrual was. GASB 45 came along and says, all right, we're not going to require you to pre-fund, but you need to accrue for this when your participants are actually earning the benefit. So, it's the whole accounting principle of matching kind of revenue and expenses together. And so, that's what GASB 45 did for us. The district continues to do pay-as-you-go funding, not uncommon, but as I mentioned in the next bullet, as we go along, because of these obligations and the impact they're having on financial statements and on bond ratings and things like that, you're seeing more and more agencies, districts, starting to consider pre-funding. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that also. And then, in a constant evolution here, future GASB developments. So, where we're heading, and this is coming up pretty quickly here, and we're already there for accounting for pension plans, we have some changes coming up. These changes are effective, likely will be effective in fiscal year 2018, and the key ideas here, the next bullet, unfunded liability becomes the balance sheet liability. That's not the case today, and I'll have an example of that. More volatile periodic expense, that's sort of important. Right now, GASB 45 allows amortization of those liabilities over a 30-year period, okay? And that's really often spreading the cost or the impact of these benefits beyond a period over which the benefits are really being earned. And then, again, I refer to the discount rate basis, and I'll have an example of that in another slide or so. So, the key results here, and what we do is, so, for planning, you know, Meg mentioned, well, we just finished the 2013 vial, and there were some reasons, but there's some projection in there, so that valuation is used for fiscal year ending '15. All right, so, and what we're showing here is kind of what is the status, or what are some key measures in 2015. The first one is the liability, approximately $14.9 million as of 2015. We'll come back to that. An expense accrual, $867,000 for fiscal year ending 2015, and that compares to contributions or pay-as-you-go amount of about $665,000. Now, this is actually, I don't want to say it's uncommon, but it's a little bit different, which you'll often see is, well, actually, let me come back to that, I'm sorry. What that produces, if we look at the next line, under the current GASB situation, it has, we have a result of a net asset of $1.3 million. That sounds pretty good, right? And that's because, under the current accounting treatment, what you look at is what is the accrual less the contribution. In the past, because some of the benefits were kind of, I don't want to say front-loaded, but it has to do with how those costs were amortized on an expense basis for a longer period of time, and the payments were accelerated. So, we actually have an asset on the books of about $1.3 million. It's a little deceiving, because when you look at the new line, that's probably, or the last large bullet there, that's what the accounting standards are going to, and that's probably a better representation of how you want to look at that. So, what the balance sheet would say is, all right, let's go back up to the liability, $14.9 million. Let's compare it to the assets we have, zero, and the $14.9 million becomes our new balance sheet liability. So, the $1.3 million asset, it's fine, it's correct under the current standards, but a little bit deceiving. Next. Let's just see, make sure I'm going to address one thing here. Okay, yeah. So, that was kind of a key aspect, and it kind of lends to some things here. So, you know, what can you do about this, right? You can, that liability, in this plan's case, many plans, that liability just continues to grow and grow and grow. You have stopped the bleeding, and benefits don't continue for all future participants. So, it's not so much in this case that it'll grow and grow and grow, it'll kind of level out, grow a little bit maybe, level out, and then, and go down over time. But still, you're going to have this liability on your balance sheet. I'll skip to the bottom. What does it impact? It impacts any bond ratings, to the extent you have unfunded liabilities. And so, going back up to the top, what can you do about it? Well, pre-funding is not required. The GASB just says, here's how you account for it, doesn't require you to fund. But what's the impact of not funding? Well, actually, yeah, I'm kind of jumping around here. So, we saw the impact of not funding is you have this large unfunded liability, and so, what can you do about it? Let me jump back one more time. The second bullet is, in order to pre-fund, what are you required to do? It's to put any pre-funding amount in an irrevocable trust. A reason for that is so that you can't come back, something that is presumably set aside in just some fund, you can't come back and access it. And that's the only way the accounting standards allow you to count that, not only as an asset to offset that $14.9 million, but also, in the third bullet there, under the discount rate impact, I mentioned that the liabilities are based on, it's projected cash flow and discounted back to today, and you use a discount rate. If you think about it, the lower the discount rate, the higher the liability, okay? So, you're discounting back at a lower percentage. So, right now, we're using a 3% rate, which is probably appropriate and more conservative than a lot of other entities, but at 3%, we have a $14.9 million liability. If you were to put funds aside, and they were earning a return, and probably 5%, if you were to put it in a trust, in an irrevocable trust, and you can invest that a little differently, a little bit more aggressively, so 5% is probably a relatively conservative amount. So, if you could earn 5%, it turns that $14.9 million liability into a $10.9 million liability. And essentially, it's not magic, it's just you've got assets set aside that are used to offset the cost of the plan. So, at 5%, that liability would be $10.9 million, and your expense would drop down from $867,000 a year to $700,000. So, that's most of my... So, that's most of my prepared comments, and I'm happy to take any questions. I'm sorry if I took extra time there.
So I have a few questions. Does our district have an irrevocable trust, and would we ever be in a position to have one?
We don't have one currently, but we're looking into it.
Okay. And this is, I guess, going into this, but at the 3% rate, how far are we looking to having a balance of zero? What, I mean, 2050? I don't know.
When you, I'm sorry.
So at a 3%, with a $14.9 liability, at what point would we no longer have? I mean, is there ever? Or maybe the answer is never?
Well, it's until the last payment is made.
Yeah.
So...
At this projection rate, years, how many?
We're talking...
I don't know if we're talking 10 years or...
No, we're talking 30.
30?
Let me, I have a projection here.
And I don't need it, yeah.
No, no, that's, 30 years out. I went 30 years out, and the payments are still on the order of $700,000, which is roughly equal, close to where they are today.
Okay, so about 30, okay.
Yeah, so our projections go out until the last person receives the last benefit.
It's page seven of the study.
Gotcha, okay. And we have also had mandates come to us through state legislation about increasing the contribution. How has that impacted the 3%? I mean, is it 3% because that's been part of the state legislation, or do we anticipate more?
I'm not sure, are you referring, this is for retiree medical? I'm not sure what mandates you're referring to.
So I'm, well, I guess I'm referring to retirement altogether, to pay into PERS.
Oh, the CalPERS and CalSTRS. These are two unrelated...
Yeah, this is different.
Totally unrelated, however, one thing about that irrevocable trust that will look like, because we have to also put a portion now on CalSTRS, a portion of the state's liability on our books. So there goes another liability. We were just audited by, for CalSTRS to find out how much of their liability will be put on our books. So if, by having the irrevocable trust or some sort of trust like that, we can offset that liability also, that so, it's, you know, even though things are going up on the liability side, we're hoping to start doing something on the asset side to offset it, so our bond ratings, if we choose to go out, would be better. And our TRAN rating...
Right. So then, so then a trust could actually hold both?
It's a separate trust.
So we could have two separate trusts to address this issue? If we ever were there financially?
Well, there's nothing, there's nothing that we have to do except an annual STIRS and PERS contributions. It's not the same as the future cost for Cal, I mean, if you wanted to, we could start putting...
I don't know, I'm just asking. I don't know that I'm asking to do that necessarily.
No one has told us to do it like that we have to do it here.
This is a certainty, what you're hearing today. The CalPERS and CalSTRS is a unknown projection based upon current political politics in Sacramento.
Okay. All right. And we would, we would be okay with, let's just say we had the money, putting this into a trust, and we wouldn't then be obligated through something else to, we would be okay with not touching it? Just because I know sometimes when money has been put aside, we sometimes...
Well, yeah, you guys would get the opportunity to say no. We certainly would tell you to or ask you to.
Well, I just want to make sure, because sometimes there's, you know, I thought that about reserves, for example.
Yes, so just to clarify, that's the whole reason why you can only count it for this purpose if it's an irrevocable trust. So once it's in there, you certainly can't pull it out for purposes other than providing benefits to the participants, to retirees.
So if we, as a board, decided, then it's a done deal for future boards, or could future vote boards...
I would let the lawyer answer that question.
Okay. Just curious. All right, thank you.
Ms. Idelson?
Two questions. So, one being, how does this compare to other districts that are healthy and their bond ratings? If we went ahead with something, a plan such as this, how, you know, healthy does that appear as far as the district goes? And then the second question, on the, you mentioned on an irrevocable trust, it being an aggressive plan that would yield like a 5%, how risky would that be? Like, what types of things would that be?
Oh, sorry, I'm not sure what I implied. What I was mentioning is that 5%, and I thought I said, actually, maybe 5% is a conservative rate of return for expectation.
Okay.
That's what I meant, I'm sorry if I misspoke.
Okay. But what type of investment would that be? Would that sort of...
Well, try not to be an investment advisor either.
That's probably good.
Yeah, right.
We're going to look into it, we're going to bring it back in May, we'll be back in May to...
You'll see some, a proposal.
Okay. So then my first, going back to that.
First question, I'll let you answer on the bond rating. I'm sorry, the first part of that question.
How does this compare...
Oh, how does it compare?
To other districts that have a similar situation of liability and...
If I looked at the benefits, I would say it's, they're similar in ceasing at age 65. The level, the dollar amount absolutely varies. So those are pretty comparable. The liability is very much dependent on, if you look at it on a per-person basis, it's very dependent on the assumptions. In this case, I think the 3% assumption is, I don't want to call it on the conservative end, but it is on the lower end of what you'll see used for the calculation of these liabilities, whereas you might see some using 4% or 5%, which means that your liabilities may appear to be relatively higher, but it's just based on those assumptions. So at the end of the day, your liabilities, the actual liabilities are only determined by the amount of benefits you paid out. Just actuarial voodoo that I do, that we do, is just to give you an estimated value of that today. So, does that help answer your question?
There are some districts that have not stopped the bleeding, and so I think we're ahead of the game.
Yeah, absolutely. I think in all classifications, that has occurred.
Yeah, I appreciate Ms. Idelson asking that question, because I can now see that, of course, you probably, I hope the majority of districts have put some sort of cap on when they stop providing benefits, and then it becomes hard to say, you know, are we doing better than anybody else? Because we're all kind of at about the same, as long as we're not pre-funding. And I just want to clarify that we will continually have people retiring, and so there is no question of us ever going to zero, because we do provide some sort of post-retirement benefit, unless we cut off. That's a different story. Unless we cut that off completely. And I guess my last question for you is, I don't think I had realized, so there's not an absolute standard when you're comparing districts, that like every district is going to give you a 3% when you're doing an actuarial study. Every district, you're going to do a 3%, 4%, 5% possibility? It could be that some other actuarial firm, or is it the district's decision to say, we're going to present these two numbers, or use these two discount rates, or...
That is true. It's partially professional opinion, it's partially circumstances. The new GASB rules are somewhat intended to tighten up the assumptions used. So the basis is expectation of investment return, and then, to the extent there isn't enough projected funding for that, then beyond that, the statements are anticipated to look at municipal bond rates. So that sort of tightens up the variability, because before it could have been, and I mentioned it, under the current standards, it's, you know, general assets of the district. Well, everybody does it a little different, and, or probably more so, has a little bit, slightly different view. So we're looking to management for that, but it can vary. Like I said, you'll see a range anywhere from three on up to, probably the high end is 5% for the unfunded.
Thank you. All right. And I just want to say also thank you, because I know that whenever we have actuaries and auditors come, and we actually want opinions and more, then it's your role to provide. And so thank you for helping us understand that.
Absolutely, you're welcome. Thanks for having me.
I'll ask a question about the bleeding that we've stopped. Two pages popped out at me, page four and page nine, but let's start with page four, because I need your help interpreting this. It looks like of the $14.9 million, almost 90% of it is management. Almost 12 million versus three million.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is page four in the actuarial report. I'm sorry.
Is that normal, in your experience, to have such a top-heavy, this number we're talking about in management?
I'm trying to think, if we put down on a per-head basis, we don't have that here.
On page nine...
Yeah, no.
Has a total number of employees in each category, but...
Yeah, sometimes I put, I will do the division there and put it there, and show it on a per, and you're right, I did not show that here.
But I was looking at page nine, which has the actual numbers in each of the different categories. And again, certificated and classified far exceed management, but yet have 10% of the liability, and management has 90%.
It's, I guess I would say, it's not uncommon in direction, in terms of magnitude, potentially. You have benefits that, on the classified and certificated, that stop at 65, and they are also limited, or they're capped, so there's no inflationary aspect to them, whereas the management benefits are for a longer period of time, for life, and they also take into account healthcare inflation, because they're based on a percentage of the premium. So, given those aspects, that's what you're going to see. What we've seen in retiree medical is that the inflationary aspect has been huge, right? And it's kind of come under control a little bit more, but it's still a large aspect. So it is not unusual in direction, and that's why I say it's not unusual in direction. In magnitude, it might be more exaggerated.
And this is something that we inherited. There's no one here at this particular time that was here. We inherited this. And when we came in in 2009, we stopped it, because we knew the cost of it was going to be astronomical. And so this is no longer there, and some people have 100%, some people have 75%, a lot of people have maybe two years, and that's it. And then nobody is in after May 1st, 2009.
If we were to project those three groups out over time, you'll see a convergence, because you've limited the, based on higher date in the one group, whereas the other groups will continue to receive.
Okay, that'll be good, several years from now. Any other questions? We'll let you get back on the road to LA.
No problem. Thank you very much, again, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
We'll go to H2, first reading of Admin Regulation 3311 regarding bids.
Ms. Chite.
Thank you. So this is a new law change on California AB 1565. And basically, there's three new ads. There's, step one is to notify the bidder if they're disqualified or non-responsive. We already do this. If a bid comes in and it's not accurate, or they missed all the appropriate things they're supposed to do, we do notify them already and let them note to be able to come back in. The second one is, of course, we open it to anyone who wants to put a bid in. And then the third one is that if we wanted to buy a federal surplus, federal property, that we don't have to go out for bid on that. So those are the three main...
Dr. Paz?
I noticed there's a typo on number nine.
Number nine.
Number nine on page three. When a bid is disqualified as non-responsive, I believe that should be non-responsive, right?
Okay. Can we bring this on consent with that minor change?
Do we want to bring it back consent, or does anybody think this is something we could do tonight?
I'd be happy to make a motion to approve this with the correction.
I'll second it.
Discussion? I know it's a break in policy, but once in a while, all in favor, say aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chite. H4, H3, first reading of Board Policy 3312, Business and Non-Instructional Operations.
Ms. Chite.
Okay, so here we go again. This is just clarification on the contracts. The only change on this is that any contract that, for services and equipment, is not to exceed five years, and materials and supplies not to exceed three years. This is ed code, and I guess it just never got into the change in the board policy. And up at the top, they've gotten rid of greater than $10,000 and less than, you know, they nailed it as a $10,000.
Wasn't that on the last one? Did we not have the right one up on the...
I didn't have the right one.
Okay. So read.
So I just want to make sure that everyone understands that these contracts don't have anything to do with like any of our professional services or anything like that, the limit to five years.
So this is mainly the change to make, to handle the situation where it happened to come in exactly $10,000?
Right.
Is that the only change on that page?
No, and then down, if you come up there, the adding of the five years, contracts not to exceed five years or three years for materials and supplies.
Okay. Questions by the board? Your wishes?
I'd like to move to adopt this board policy with those changes.
Second?
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you.
H4, first reading of Board Policy 4030, nondiscrimination in employment.
Dr. Christensen.
There are two slight changes to this board policy. One adds that you can't discriminate against a person because of their military or veteran status. And the second is that Board Policy 0410 is the policy that should be posted in student government meeting rooms, not the one that pertains to employees. And I just want to add that BP 0410 has some additional categories that pertain specifically and only to students that are not in the employee ones, such as ethnic group identification, parental status, and linguistic or economic background.
So two changes on this one. Discussion? What are your wishes?
I have a...
Okay, Ms. Idelson?
So you're talking about like student government, like ASB, or what, or when you say it has to be posted in their meeting room, or...
Right, wherever student government meets.
Okay.
Not this one.
Not this one.
This one...
It's been cleared.
Said it should be, and that's been deleted, but there's another one that is posted.
Right, that pertains just to students.
I see, I see. Okay.
I'll go ahead and move approval of this Board Policy 4030, nondiscrimination in employment update.
Second?
Seconded by Dr. Paz. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. H5, first reading Administration Regulation 4031, Complaints Concerning Discrimination in Employment.
The next several will be Dr. Christensen.
My night to excel with board policies. So the complaints, there are two minor changes here. And in the first paragraph, it refers you back to Board Policy 4030, nondiscrimination for the definition. That's the first change. So these are complaint procedures, and you'll go look back there... go look back there to determine what the definition of discrimination or harassment is based on those special categories, which we just added veteran or military status to. The second one is that a written report on findings and corrective action, this changes to providing a summary of the report to the complainant. Those are the two changes. The second one was recommended, I'm sorry, by our attorneys.
Since this one covers discrimination, I'd like to see it come back on the consent calendar just for the, give the public a chance to look at it if they want to.
Sure.
So, bring this one back on the consent.
Back on consent. Okay. Very good.
H6, first reading Administrative Regulation 4121, Temporary Substitute Personnel.
Okay. There's one change. And what we have added is that unless hired for a specific long-term substitute teaching job, substitute teachers will be limited to 129 hours maximum per month. And by way of further explanation, the district has never provided benefits to substitute teachers. However, current law requires offering benefits if a substitute works more than 129 hours per month over a 10-month period. So, this unbudgeted potential expense requires the district to monitor the hours worked each month by our subs. And this is a statewide problem and we're following the lead of other districts in monitoring these hours.
Do we have many that work more than 129 in the past?
We don't. Well, we're now able to really determine that with AESOP. And we have some, but I wouldn't say it's an exorbitant number, but it's something we have to watch.
How many working days would that work out to just on a typical substitute?
It's about 15 days a month.
Okay.
The board's wishes?
I'd like to move for approval of Administrative Regulation 4121, Temporary Substitute Personnel.
I'll second it.
Discussion. Anybody who wants to object to these, I'll take the objection, okay? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried unanimously. H7, first reading of Board Policy, Administrative Regulation 4112-21, Interns.
There are many changes to the intern policy. And the bottom line is that there are many, many more requirements at the university level as well as at the district level to provide a high level of support on both sides to any interns. We only have intern agreements with Brandman University and we had one with Antioch. And we're recommending that we adopt this in the event that we would need an intern. There might be some unusual situations where we can't find a credential teacher, and I can think of one right off the top of my head, where we would use this. But this is, would not be our first choice by any stretch of the imagination. But we don't want to not have it because we want that option just in case we can't find qualified person. We mainly find this in the music area.
Questions on this? Because of substantial changes, we'll put it back on the consent calendar. H8, no, H9, fourth reading.
Thank you very much. With this last, Dr. Drati.
Well, Mr. Rickman pulls information up. This is the fourth reading of this AR. I would like to call your attention to the second page. The items in green are what's new that needs to be considered from the, from last time you saw this, this policy or this AR. With that said, I'll take questions.
Any comments or questions? We've had this four times now, so.
Mr. Herron?
Yes.
Yeah. I just, I just had a question on the, on the meaning of number four. Just, I'm not sure if I'm just not reading it quite right there. If the activity is at a swimming pool other than the district, the district will, in accordance with the required facility use agreement, provide proof of insurance?
Yeah. Go ahead, Nick.
Okay. I talked to Sisk about this. And basically, what we're trying to say here is that if our kids are going, let's say, to the Y, if the Y requests us to fill out a facility use agreement or whatever they're, whatever they're asking us to do, we will provide them with what they want.
All right. So, what we're saying here is that our students are insured wherever they go.
Correct.
That's correct.
Thank you.
I want to ask an-
Ms. Edelson?
Additional question to that. So, say for instance, they're on a field trip and they go to a pool hotel or, you know, something where it's incidental opportunity to swim. How would that be handled?
They should not go swimming.
Okay. So-
Unless we have an agreement with the hotel.
Wow. Okay. That's potentially complicated, don't you think?
Good supervision and chaperones will ensure that students don't swim when they're not supposed to.
Or get it out of their room.
Yeah. Or leave their room when they're not supposed to.
Okay. So, a standard hotel swimming pool potentially would be off limits?
That's correct.
Okay. And that'll be communicated through-
It has been communicated repeatedly. Whether individuals actually comply with that is-
Well, I guess that's my question. Is that reality? I mean, do we know from experience how many kids go back?
Well, we haven't surveyed our principals, but we certainly could.
I would, I mean, in my experience, it's often standard practice that when athletic teams whatever go to, you know, on trips out of the area and they're at the hotel swimming, you know, they swim. But if that's the situation, I think it'd-
I know some who go surfing.
Wow.
Wow.
Well, we'd like to know who they are.
I have a question. Is there any, did, is this the only option? Like, is there any particular waiver that the parent and the parent could sign on behalf of the student related to swimming activities?
We can craft any waiver we'd like, but whether it will protect us is another story.
Well, no. Is there a waiver that will protect us? And is this things now?
Cert, with certainty, no.
So, in a situation where the hotel has insurance, this would still trump that is what you're saying?
So, you're asking reality versus board policy.
Yeah. Okay.
We'll do our best to enforce the board policy. We'll expect that all of our employees will comply with board policy.
In thinking about what my mouth said, I was thinking-
I didn't say that.
I was thinking in terms of, now that I think about it, a non-school activity.
Oh, good.
Club, club sports. So, I was-
Thank you. Mr. Handel, I could see his heart beating from here.
My mouth spoke what my mind should have thought.
If the concern, if the concern is the education of our, of our principals and administrators, we will, we would definitely be training them on these policies.
We'll continue to do so.
We'll be doing that.
Is this one you want brought back or since it's been the fourth time, want to get?
I'd like to actually move to approve this fourth reading of Administrative Regulation 6153, School-Sponsored Field Trips.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you, Dr. Drati. Thank you for the effort on that for four times. That's a new record.
It might be.
H10, first reading of Administrative Regulation 6159.2, Non-Public, Non-Sectorian School and Agency Services for Special Education.
Would ask Ms. Rodriguez to come forward.
Good evening, President Herron and Board Members and Dr. Cash and Cabinet. After the passage of the new law SB 1212012, which prohibits the referral or placement of a student with a disability to or in a non-public, non-sectarian school without the agreement of the individualized education program or the IEP team, the Administrative Regulation AR 6159.2 has been updated to reflect the following required changes. Contract has been replaced with master contract. The word "non-sectarian" and the phrase "including student/teacher ratios" has been added to, for clarity. If there is mutual agreement between the district and the non-public, non-sectarian school or agency, administrative and financial agreements in the master contract may be made, provided the change doesn't alter the student's free, appropriate, public education in the student's IEP. Each student placed in a non-public, non-sectarian school or agency is required to have an individual service agreement or an ISA based on the student's IEP. Each ISA shall specify a length of time according to the student's IEP that will not exceed one year. The IEP team shall annually review the student's IEP. The IEP and ISA shall specify the review schedules. Finally, if the student is a secondary student, prior to the annual review of a student's IEP, the high school institution shall be notified of the possible transfer of the MPS or non-sectarian student.
Questions? Like to bring this one back on the consent calendar. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. H11, District Data Analysis Annual Cycle.
Well, members of the board, thanks to Dr. Guillermo Wan. She's put together a proposed cycle for your comment and questions. I think if Dr. Guillermo Wan was to go through each individual item, we might stay past midnight. One of the questions we wanted, because this is for you and our public, is, is the framework understandable, meet your needs? Do the data points that we've identified sufficient, satisfactory? And then, is the timeline that we proposed meet your needs? Dr. Guillermo Wan.
Good evening, Mr. President and members of the board, Cabinet, Mr. Superintendent. Thank you. I think, I think I see a question, so I'd be happy to field those if that's your preference at this time.
Dr. Paz.
So, I, I'm such a visual person that when I see text, it just like, it-
Okay.
I start shutting down. So, it would be great if we could see like this in some calendar version where you kind of block it out and we'd see the, that would be, you know, really easy for me to understand and see it in that regard. And I have a second question. The second question was more to do with, wow, this is ambitious. It was a lot. And I know I've said before about looking at your position, especially with regards to like looking at the amount of work that goes into this. And then, obviously, we've had the board previously approve a contract with an outside entity in terms of doing some of this piece, some of these pieces or along these lines, right? So, I'm wondering how much of this, are we relying on that entity to do some of this? How much of it is not? I'm only asking that question to understand how much of it we're really placing on you. And then, with all the other responsibilities I know that you have, that would be, and Hanover has mentioned, at least in Student Services Report Number Two that I'm looking at right now. So, kind of a big picture would be really helpful.
Okay. So, I can see that Hanover has mentioned here three times. One for the GATES survey report. And actually, I'm, I'm doing that this spring and summer and fall. And then, Hanover is planning to take that on for next year. So, the first one that we'll see from Hanover will be, actually, this, in the LCAP cycle, you'll see some preliminary data for the climate survey from them. And then, we'll see a one-to-one iPad survey. And then, we'll see the Student Services Report Number Two that will have the climate survey data next spring in it.
Just a follow-up question to that too. In terms of looking at all these pieces, you know, we're having the wonderful opportunity to look at this and kind of give our feedback and input right now. But I wonder if there has been a process spoken about in terms of district staff about when items are placed on this list, when items are considered to be placed. Is this closer to a final thing that we're looking at? Because I wouldn't necessarily think that as more data needs arise. It might be another, you know, there may be a desire to have a particular focus on another report or another report area. So, I'm wondering about that as well.
Sure. So, I would say this is probably 80% of what we know and can anticipate based on almost one full annual cycle. And then, in terms of different reports that we may want, I know that August through December is pretty packed, but there are a couple windows where identified district-wide internal program evaluations. And that would be the preferable time for us to say, hey, this is when we're going to look at some of our district-wide programs and allocate my time to do more in-depth evaluation work in that sense. In terms of other reporting that comes up, I mean, we just figure it out as we go. That's how, how it's going. So-
You mentioned the one-on-one survey.
Mm-hmm.
Have we just done one or is it one in process or soon to be in process? Or is it going to be next January?
It'll be done in the fall, reported out in January.
Because this says January, reported out in February. So, but I just, I was wondering what-
Oh. Okay. So, the date, the data available, January. So, it's, it's as Dr. Cash has said, that Hanover is anticipating having the results for us sometime in January, which would mean that the, the survey window was in the fall.
But-
Right. So, the, the iPad survey will be administered sometime in the fall. They will do the analysis and then provide that report to us sometime in January.
So, we didn't do one for the school year?
No, we didn't. It didn't get done in time in order. It would have competed with the climate survey.
Okay.
I talked about that a couple of board meetings.
I was going to say, I think you might have been on that particular board meeting.
Okay. So, if we don't get the results of the survey until the second meeting in February, that's what negates any, any activity to, to expand the one-to-one.
This fall. That is correct.
Well, this fall for sure. But even if we don't get to February, the next school year is almost over.
Well, it would be in time for the board to decide whether it wanted to have the same kind of rollout that we had for this pilot, if we wanted to continue it, which was starting in the spring.
Okay.
And I would say that's true for all of the Hanover surveys that are tied to LCAP funding allocation. The goal is to have them all done before May, June on an annual cycle so that you can make those decisions accordingly.
Okay. Any other questions? I mean, Dr. Paz?
Last statement, I guess, more than anything. I think this is, this is really great. I know I've asked for it myself in terms of having something so we can see when things are rolling out. But I also would appreciate too that the district could look at these on a more regular basis to see how useful they are to staff, in fact, and get some of that feedback to, to the board in terms of what they, you know, even the board, you know, would, would appreciate looking at these and how useful they are to board decision-making as well. And incorporate that sort of feedback to you. And then, maybe, you know, even looking at forming a district committee that looks at all of these pieces to support the direction and not necessarily do it, I'm not suggesting that it's currently done in solitude, but complete sort of that loop of information from the sites. And maybe you're looking at it from the board perspective as well.
Absolutely. I'll speak to the, the last point. We have brought up the idea of a committee to both Cabinet and the principal leadership team, and that has been met favorably. So, I will be developing a plan for that in the upcoming months. And then, with regard to the feedback on the utility for site district and board decision-making, I think that's a great idea. I do want to reaffirm that, that this was, that feedback was provided by Cabinet and principals on it and that with the transition to Ares.net and the availability of Ares Analytics, there is a capability to do dashboard reporting in there that will have- there is a capability to do dashboard reporting in there that will have real-time data, or daily updated data for principals. And so, as much of this is possible, I'm going to build in that platform for them to be able to use in their committees. I'll defer to Dr. Droudi if he wants to talk about the PLC process, or assessment in general.
While it's coming up, I did just now notice for the first time that the column on the right, Board Meetings, is by month, so-
Yes.
We can look at any, it's from August through next year, what to expect in any given, what meeting and what month. I didn't notice that they were all-
Yep.
In order like that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. I'm not sure which page is on, but you'll notice in there, I think, Dr. Wan, Chelsea Wan, put down information about a data summit, that we're going to try to have, an annual data summit, in which we look at all sorts of data, discipline, climate, academic, basically to review all this data, so that we can make leadership decisions from our senior leaders, principals to assistant principals, so we can make decisions about what to do next. So, we plan on living this out, and the platform that Dr. Wan is talking about, that is be, that'll be live data we'll be looking at, or lead data we'll be looking at will be things that we can adjust mid-year. But the summit will be where we can take all that cumulative data and make it some bigger decisions about finances and decisions we have to make about direction we have to take the district in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Dr. Paz, in the calendar format, could you either set, do, I, I want to make sure it's readable for everybody, so if you have something specific, could you give me a call, or Dr. Guillermo Wan, and let her know?
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Thank you.
Can, I just quickly say, can we add pages to it? And I know that on the e-version of it, the lines don't show up very well. I think the, the lines might show up a little bit better, and just for user-friendly, those are two things that I know.
So, one of the things I wanted to say in conclusion was that the real purpose of this is for us to do it for a year, and see how it, we'll, we'll report on whether it's effective, whether there's other data points we need, what wasn't worthwhile, as we go throughout the year, so.
So, sorry, I see the pages are there. I don't know why I was thinking, maybe it's just-
Okay.
I'm looking at it on the iPad Goodreads, so, never mind.
But that's, that's good to know. Thank you.
My lines are really bad.
Thank you, Dr. Guillermo Wan.
Okay. We will now go to H-13, Discussion of 2015 Summer School Program for the District.
This is Mr. Handel and Dr. Droudi.
That's correct. Thank you, Dr. Cash. Good evening, board members. What you have before you is a listing of all the summer activities planned this year at each one of our sites. I think this is a, we've, we've progressed a lot over the years, and initially, when I got into, when both Dr. Droudi and I came into the office, it was kind of the Wild West out there, we weren't sure what was being offered at each site during the summer. Now, we're, we're slowly trying to make sure our folks understand what's, what's happening on our sites, and we have a better understanding of what are happening at our sites. You'll see a number of different offerings throughout the district, but I think one of the great things that happened during this process of identifying all the things that were going on, on each one of the principal sites, was one principal in particular said, oh my goodness, I have all these things going on, I don't think I can handle anymore. And so, it was, it was great, because they were able to see on paper all the things that were going on at their site, what the dates were, and so that helped them, you know, take a look at whether or not, what they wanted to do and what they could actually offer was feasible, in reality, in terms of their time and their ability to provide the services. Another piece that I want to point out is the evaluation tool. In the past, we've just kind of done things and not measured what their effectiveness is, and while they don't all have the same evaluation tool, they're using different metrics to evaluate the effectiveness of all the different programs, we're hoping to be able to look at a more streamlined assessment tool in the years that come. We're going to have the data summit, as Dr. Droudi alluded to earlier, so that we're all understanding that summer school is for a time for students to catch up, and we want to make sure, or to accelerate. We want to make sure that students, or what we're offering to students is effective, and is efficient, and cost-effective. We don't want to be just offering things, or doing things that aren't having, or isn't having an impact on student learning. So, there's not much to, to talk about, other than each one of the offerings, and again, they're all different at each one of the sites. You'll notice Cleveland, because they have such a short turnaround, won't be offering any, any summer school this year, at this point, but there is a transition with their, with their leadership, then something may came up, may come up. But at this point, you'll see all the offerings that, that our district will be providing this summer, and I'll take any questions that you may have.
Are, are, do the students, can, they go to any campus to take these if they want to, or do they have to stick to their campus?
It depends on what's being offered. Like, if the city rec is offering a program, anyone in the community can go attend the program, but if it's a site-specific program, yes, it is obviously site-specific, and students that have been identified for additional support or acceleration will be offered those opportunities in summer school.
Might just scroll through them and-
Yeah. Sure.
In the secondary, you know, at least at the high schools, we've always had summer school in our schools, in, in the three comprehensive high schools and LaCuesta. What you're, our focus this year, what's different about this year is we have two forms of summer school taking place. Once we recall the credit recovery, which has always existed, these are students that have failed, failed the course, that indeed, that need to recover credit. So, we, we'll use Odysseyware for that. What's, what is different, there's the, is the math support piece that we have for our students that we feel needs extra support to be successful in the next series of Common Core Math, and we're calling that the learning recovery portion. So, we, we recognize that. What's different about our students, this, because of smarter balances, is that they can no longer just repeat some of the courses that they failed in the past. And what I mean is that in the past, if they would have failed Algebra I, we can repeat Algebra I, because that's where the state assessed them, and you could actually continue that all four years of their high school career. It's different with smarter balancing, in the sense that when a student, the assessment will occur in Math III, which is the pre-algebra, pre-calculus components of Common Core Math. So, whether a student is taking those courses, their junior year or not, they will be assessed there. So, we could, that means that we can't just repeat two of the same courses. So, all high schools are working very, I think, smartly with their math teams and math teachers, and identify where the weaknesses are, and then they're going to maximize any opportunity they can, whether it be in the evenings, or summers, or even possibly even the weekends throughout the year, to, to accelerate their learning, so that way, we're not having to repeat courses throughout the year for, for math.
Well, this summer, I know we went into a different online provider for credit recovery, correct?
No, we're, we're still with Odysseyware.
Okay. So, it's the same one we did last summer?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, we already have one full year, and we implemented for another second year. Are we ever going to get to a point in time where we, how's that working? That's basically my question.
How's that working? We have received credit. Students have, students have claimed credit for some of those courses. Whether they recovered learning, that's, that's, we're going to evaluate that this year, to see if we're actually accelerating students' learning throughout their summer.
And I just wanted to add, because Ms. Idelson and I actually sit on the high school, what is it, the-
Graduation?
Graduation Requirement Committee, and this has been a longer, more in-depth topic of conversation, which is not just credit recovery, but online learning. So, he summed it up in a sentence, but just so everybody knows, we've been talking about it to a greater extent in the committee.
Absolutely. And then, what you also see different is if you scroll up through junior highs, in the past, LaCumbra and San Marcos High School, high schools have established a bridge program for the peak program, and you'll notice that we're, we are expanding through Santa Barbara Junior High and Santa Barbara High School. So, what you'll see there is that there is a bridge program for those two schools as well. So, eventually, hopefully, we'll, if we're successful here, we'll, you'll see Galete Valley and Despeblos on this list next year.
Ms. Idelson?
Couple of questions. First of all, on this slide, it's showing health is being offered for ninth graders at San Marcos?
Yes.
And that's, that's new, correct?
No.
Oh, that's been done?
That's been there. San Marcos, San Marcos has always offered it for those peak students.
Okay.
That way, you freeze up their schedule to take Avid and other courses they need to take.
Okay. I got you. And then, the other thing I think that's intriguing to me is the number 300 at each high school campus, if you go down further?
Yes.
The other direction?
Yes, we-
Or, no, maybe up.
Yeah, I figured one of you would ask a question about that one, but that, that is the capacity each school has for it. Right now, we don't have students actually enrolled in summer school yet.
So, that's like 10 classrooms operating at that point? I mean, if there's-
Well, we have, each site has two teachers. They'll be rotating, but we, the Odysseyware online program allows us to put students in, in computers, and there's a lot of personalized learning that takes place there, so we have the capacity to open it up to-
And they can do the learning anywhere?
Yes.
So, at home?
Yes.
At home. So, the teachers are there, the teachers are there really for any students that are struggling, they're, they'll check, students will actually check in, but a lot of their work they'll be doing will be personalized. All students will be, through Odysseyware, you can assess where they are, and actually monitor their growth, and the teacher's there to help support those that need that, that instruction, that personal instruction with the teacher.
Thank you.
Ms. Lamont?
So, I, I think that this is useful. I would love to see this once summer school is completed, just to see our actual numbers.
Absolutely.
But I actually think that this is really helpful in just understanding, and I pose a bigger kind of question, not to answer right now or to discuss now, but are there any implications for what non-credit recovery, non-essential summer school might look like in the future for our district? And so, I know that there's a foundation that does it, but are we ever in a position as a district to think about something that's not immediate needed, but something else extra for students?
Yeah. I mean, the bridge program is that.
Well, in addition to the bridge, the bridge is actually, I didn't realize we were doing a bridge program, but-
Well, we'll have to, that, that could be a part of LCAP conversation, but I know Meg Jeter has something to say about that.
And it may, it may not, but I'm glad we're doing the bridge, but it's two grades, right? It's seven and nine, but-
I think we all would love to see our campuses used during the summer to keep our kids learning and healthy and moving, but that's probably a Meg question. Okay? Okay, anything else? Thank you, Dr. Droudi.
Thank you.
Mr. Handel? Okay. We will go to H-14, Schools of Choice, Adams Elementary, Harding, and Santa Barbara Community Academy.
Mr. Handel will present this side.
Thank you again, Dr. Cash.
He's got the next two, by the way.
Yes. So, I've got the next two. I want to point out that Mrs. Alzina couldn't be here tonight, because she was tending, attending the service for Mrs. Hernandez, and also, Mrs. Sabaya Santana couldn't be with us tonight, because she was also ill. So, what we have here is our first annual, I would assume, Programs of Choice Evaluation, and I think the purpose behind all this is because we do have three separate programs going on in our elementary schools that are Programs of Choice, and we want the board to be up to date on all the information regarding those particular programs, just as we do with our secondary programs, and the academies, and what have you. And I don't want to spend too much time in the, on these reports. I do want to just point out a few things, and then have you all ask me some questions. So, just the demographics, those are, you know, when I look at them, I try to make sure that they're somewhat representative of the schools that they're being offered at, and I believe the Montessori program is almost in line with the demographics at Adams School. It's, it's, it's getting there, it's getting better. We're seeing more and more diversity in, in the program, but I can tell you that the students that I've seen in there, and every time I've walked through the program and spoken with Mrs. Alzina, they're working really hard to make sure that tho, that those particular classes are representative of the entire school demographics. So, can we go to the next?
I'm not sure.
Yes. No, no, the, the funding sources, obviously, Mrs. Alzina does a great job of, of funding that particular program. It's something that's near and dear to her heart. I can tell you, being in a doctoral cohort with her, and as many times as she's, she references Dr. Montessori, this is very, very close to her heart. She incorporates the Star reading, the Renaissance Star reading into the program that helps us during this time of transition with data. That particular class, the Montessori program, is just a tremendous, shows tremendous growth year after year. If you think about the Lexile gains in that class, assume, I believe it's 40% or 40 Lexile points gained in, 40 Lexile points represents one full academic year, and I think 60 points are for two years. The students in that particular program average 73 points a year in growth, and so, they're doing some great things in the Montessori program, but it's great that, that Miss Alzina is doing a great job of monitoring their progress. So, let's go ahead and keep scrolling up. And here are some of the reports that you'll see, while they're even kind of hard for me to see, but I spoke to Miss Alzina today, and she was very proud of the fact of all the gains that her students have attained from the Montessori, Montessori program at her site, and I can tell you that Dr. Cash and I are always getting updates from Miss Alzina, seeing all the awards that are the recognition that the Adams School in particular, but specifically these, these students and these teachers, and the growth and their participation in the Star reading program. So, let's continue to scroll up. What's that?
That was Star Math.
That was Star Math. I'm sorry. So, she also uses the Star Math program. I apologize. She uses Star Math to, to monitor growth, that's something that she's purchased with her site funds, and again, it's her, it's Miss Alzina, I almost said Dr. Alzina, soon-to-be Dr. Alzina, just relentless focus on, on progress and monitoring student progress, and always intervene, intervening when she needs to, when they need to, but she does a great job of, of ensuring that students are monitored constantly, and they're, and teachers are able to speak in terms of data when they're talking about students. Thank you, Doc. So, there you'll see a whole bunch of extracurricular activities. You'll see, again, this, this sheet is reflective of Miss Alzina's energy. She's got a lot of things going on at the site, specifically with the Montessori program, everything from poetry, to festivals, to camping, you name it. They're doing it at, in the Montessori program. Also, the, the accomplishes, speaking of Ms. Parker's daughter, just doing a great job of bringing in additional resources. They purchased 3D printer. You'll notice more information about the, the prowess, the prowess that our students in the Montessori program have exemplified through their growth in AR points and words. You'll see 21 million words so far this year, read by Montessori students, which is just a tremendous amount of reading. Every single one of the students are at benchmark or higher, and you'll see her future goals are to continue to serve as a demonstration space, to provide traditional classroom teachers with ideas and lessons. This is, again, this program is near and dear to Miss Alzina's heart, and she has really done a great job of growing it. It's seen tremendous success. I, I couldn't be any prouder of a, of a program of choice in our district. Are there any questions?
Ms. Idelson?
I'm just curious how students gain access to the Montessori program at Adams. What's the criteria, or is there a waiting list, and how does she do that?
Can you go back to the recruitment? There's a recruitment process that Miss Alzina- There's a recruitment process that Miss Alzina spelled out here. They're placing the Montessori program based on parent request and teacher recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Parker?
I can just share that there, there is not a waiting list for it. I think that there are sometimes issues when people from outside the attendance area would like to get into it and can't, because Adams students have priority there. And so in that sense, maybe there, there's a barrier to everybody in the community that would like to have access to a public Montessori program.
Right.
But other than that, no.
Right. Okay, thank you. The next Program of Choice is our Core Knowledge Program at Santa Barbara Community Academy. And again, Sabaya Santana couldn't be with us tonight because she was feeling ill. Because her entire site is engaged in the Core Knowledge Program, obviously, the demographics reflect the school. The recruitment practice, obviously, is simply getting into the school allows you into the program. Every single one of their teachers are trained in Core Knowledge, and I can tell you, they put a tremendous amount of effort into getting trained, staying up to date, and I know they're in the middle of a certification process, I believe, and they're updating their, their units of study, getting them Common Core aligned, and doing a lot of great professional development at the site. You'll see some of the recruitment practices of students or families visiting the campus, brochures, and all the traditional methods of, of selling the program. But I can tell you, the success of the program sells itself. It's very well-known, especially on the west side of town, as a very viable option for those parents that are interested in a Core Knowledge Program or something alternative to the traditional programs that we have throughout our elementary sites.
Can I ask a quick question back on that first page? And just that, and I'll say it now, for this and, and for Harding as well, this is a school that doesn't have an attendance area. Harding, a university partnership does have an attendance area, but in both cases, they do not reflect the demographics of the district. And we just really struggle with integrating our schools, we really do. And this is a case where it's, it's like, obviously, both schools, and it's not, the school's necessarily responsible, the district really needs to do more about figuring out how to get students of every ethnic background to attend our schools and to feel comfortable at all of our schools. And this is a case, these two are just our cases where, you know, we spend so much time struggling to get Latino students into programs that are dominant, white, and here are ones where we just really need to make an effort to get students that are white into programs that are dominant Latino. They're great schools, and so it's frustrating to see that.
Well, thank you for saying that. I can tell you, from my experience as a principal, we made a lot of growth, and it's, it's just, it's very difficult to have the family stay, and I, I agree that we need to do something. And I'm certain, you know, we all go to bed each night wondering how we can resolve that. I know we've had plenty of discussions in Cabinet and one-on-one with Dr. Cash about how we can resolve it, and there's mutual frustration in addressing that, so. So the funding you'll see comes from everything from grants to their PTA, to individuals and a foundation. Their student academic data has been really coming on in the last few years. Prior to the API no longer being available to us, they really came on strong the last couple of years. They were recognized as a California Distinguished School, I believe Miss Alzina's final year there, but I can tell you, the API continued to grow after Mrs. Sabaya Santana took over. So the growth and the culture there is obviously very student-focused, and their, their APIs, as indicated on the chart below, had continued to grow for the last, she's, three, four, five years. And when I walked through the, through the classes today, you'll see a lot of, of students, all the teachers engaged in really great work with their students. It's very exciting to see. Extracurricular activities, we're very excited that Santa Barbara Community Academy was awarded an AOK grant, which I can tell you is fully enrolled. They're doing a great job of, of keeping the students there. I, I know when initially it was, we weren't sure if we were going to be able to fill all those slots, but they, they've done a tremendous job of filling them all, but there's also other offerings, well, including Girl Scouts, I was going to point out, and that is up there. So there's a lot of great things going on at the school, and I also know that they, there are after-school sports, such as soccer, football, Little League, dance and music. So AOK and sports going on after school, I think is a tremendous resource for that, that school and all the families that it serves. Community partnerships, you see the list, it's a great list that reflects our community, and again, it's a great representation of how giving our community is in terms of their partnerships and all the folks that Mrs. Sabaya Santana's done a great job of reaching out to. And you'll see in the accomplishments, again, a whole bunch, first year of implementation, and, I don't want to go through them individually, but you, you can see them, they, they've got a lot of great things going on. They have ICANN just started this past year, they had a showcase along with their Core Knowledge showcase, that I believe most, if not all, of you attended. Mrs. Sabaya Santana is doing a great job. It is a small school, but as you can see, there's just a lot of great things going on, including technology expansion at the site. Future goals you'll see is continue to implement those skills and those units that they're developing. Again, it's, it's been a process of getting them, all the curriculum Common Core aligned, it's a process, just like we're doing in the traditional programs. But she, again, is, is, she being Mrs. Sabaya Santana and her staff are doing a great job of engaging in that work, and it's another exciting program in our school district that offers an alternative for those parents that are looking for something different than our traditional programs. Any, any questions? Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call Mrs. Veronica Pinkley, so she can explain and speak to the Harding University Partnership School Primary Years Program. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Board members, President and Superintendent, Cabinet. So what we have here is just the student demographic. Of course, we offer the IB Primary Years Program to all of our students, and the, the university partnership to all of our students as well. So recruitment practices, and I'll speak a little bit to what Ms. Parker said in regards to trying to have our school reflect the, the demographics of the community. One of the things that we've been doing this year is, instead of, a lot of, unfortunately, a lot of people will come to get a kindergarten registration packet only to ask for a transfer. And so one of the things that we've done this year is to recommend that they come and have a full school, school tour before having that transfer paper signed. And there have been a number of these tours given, and a number of people that have turned their heads and, you know, really been impressed with the quality of education that is happening in the, in, within the classroom itself, and just watching the students interact during the day. So that's been positive. I'm hoping that's one of the, one of our vision, that's in our vision, is to really work towards, you know, more of a, having more diversity at our campus.
Mr. Herr, may I ask a quick question on that right now, since it's up there? Do you give individual tours, or do you set certain, you know, maybe four dates over the course of the transfer period that parents are required to come to one of those four times, for example?
Right, so it started out like that. I had many group tours, and it was about four, although I've given, I gave two yesterday and I gave one today, that people are trickling in. And I think the word is beginning to get, you know, when I came onto the site, it was astounding that a lot of our parents didn't even know that we offered the International Baccalaureate Program. And so we've really been advertising it. It's, in the foyer, you'd come in and you'd see this large graphic that shows the, the pedagogy, you know, in a, in a very colorful and understanding way in both languages. We spend a lot of time working with parents and, and educating them, not only in the IB program, but also in the AVID program and how they correlate. So there's been a lot of awareness and a lot of community awareness, I believe, that is just happening slowly, so I anticipate a demographic change. Pertaining to funding sources, the district had, is supportive of the IB program, and it's part of the standards and practices of the IB program that, that's established because there is some financial, there is an additional financial impact, and so the, the IB program wants to assure that we are supported on all, all levels. Our foundation, of course, supports us, as well as some individuals and community partners. Our data, unfortunately, I did this in the beginning of the year, so I did not have access to the SRI data, which is really encouraging, I'll move on to that after I look at this. I, I tried to get this information to you in cohorts, so you're actually looking at the students that were in grade five, well, the column labeled six represents our current sixth grade students who CST data began in third grade. So if you look at the ELA sixth grade students, those, that is that cohort. So they started out during the candidacy phase, so when they were just beginning to opt, to, to bring in the IB program. And then the, the 2012 is the authorization phase, so they were still fairly new, and then there was the implementation phase. And typically, in new programs, there is a little bit of an implementation dip. It's rather encouraging that it, it's not that traumatic, and this is percentile. So, you know, we had at that time in 2013, you know, close to 50% of our students proficient or advanced in sixth grade ELA, and you can see the data, and over 60% in math. Right now, we have reclassified over 51 students, and we still have a window of reclassification at the end of May. We anticipate there will be more, so that speaks to the higher level of SRI scores. We also have, we set a goal in the beginning of the year that 90% of our kinder students would be reading, and we have that, we have acquired that goal. So we're going to move that up into first grade, and kind of going to try to track this cohort, because that, the focus on reading has been very definitely set, because students can't inquire and they can't access research and do what the IB program requires without being able to read and write, so that's exciting. So our extracurricular activities, you know, we have quite a few going on. Currently, we've just begun working with UCSB on a reading clinic. There's a number of our students that are getting shuttled up to UCSB, that's not on here, and we'll, we'll just keep adding and building on to that. Of course, our community partnerships, if you want to scroll down, include quite a few, quite a few community and corporate partnerships. However, UCSB is our strongest one, and we're really working on building that. One of the things that we're really excited about is that college-going culture, and we've been working with not only the Gravitz School, but also other departments in bringing cohorts of students to support the units of inquiry, to bring real world relevance, so to see a lot more college presence on our campus. So we have, I spoke to a couple of other accomplishments that we've had pertaining to our students' reading, which is really exciting to me, and, you know, it's a great place to be. A, a number of people have just said, this school just feels good, and I encourage you to come by and check it out, because I think we are, you know, undergoing a little bit of a, a positive shift. Any questions?
Questions? Nope, didn't look, thank you very much.
Okay, pleasure, thank you.
I think we're on to the next item.
Okay, age 15.
Can I just ask, though, back on that one? So there's still OAS and, and the Gate program at Washington, are those ones that we'll just see in the future, or?
Those will be ones we see in the future, yes. The next item that you have before you is the Imagine Learning Evaluation. I believe it was last year, Dr. Cash brought to our attention a, his particular supplemental literacy program that was having great results out in the Chula Vista Unified School District. Dr. Ramirez and I looked into the program. We actually met with our principals, representatives from Imagine Learning came out, spoke to our teachers. We, we, being myself and Mr. Ramirez, Dr. Ramirez, went to look at the sites, talk to the people, talk to the students, seen, checked to see how, how it was actually being implemented. And so at the time, we, we thought we saw something that could potentially help us with early literacy, because when you look at our program, K, TK through, or pre-K through 12, there, there isn't a particular program we can point at, or supplemental program, that we can say, this is helping accelerate learning for students and literacy in particular. So we've done our due process to go check out a few sites that are, that have implemented the Imagine Learning Program, and we've brought it to our district, small scale, a couple sites. We have Monroe and McKinley in grades K through 3 at McKinley, and I believe it's K through 6 at Monroe, simply because there's more need, more students that have literacy challenges at Monroe. But I got to tell you, what was so impressive about Imagine Learning was the fact that, you know, most of the time when you talk to representatives of a program, they can, whatever you ask them, they say, yeah, we do that. Yeah, we can do that. But the folks from Imagine Learning were like, hmm, you know, we don't do that. What we do is, we are, are a great program for early literacy in grades preschool through 2. That's our wheelhouse. If you can find other uses for it, that's on you, but pre-K through second grade is where you're going to get the most bang for your buck with our program. And so, working with Dr. Guillermo Juan, we've created an evaluation plan, and we believe that as we begin to look at these programs that we have throughout our district, that these evaluation plans are what's needed, because we have such a plethora of programs that are being utilized throughout our site, that we want to make sure as we go into this pilot, that we're going to be able to look back and say, okay, this program is working or it's not working, and either we're going to continue with it and go district-wide if it's working, or we're going to scrap it if it's not working. And we're hoping as we go through this elaborate evaluation process, that those decisions become much easier to make. This, this form that you, we have in front of us outlines essentially what the program does, how it aligns to our LCAP, what the objectives are specifically to the program, and how we're going to measure it. I'm not going to go through the entire document, but I'm open to questions at this point.
Ms. Parker?
I guess my first question, so just to, just to be clear, sorry, this is a, a pilot, the idea of doing a pilot program where then, if it were successful, you'd come back and say, this is something that we want to spread district-wide and have board approval as sort of a supplemental literacy program, or intervention literacy program.
That's correct.
Are we comparing it against anything? The last thing that I remember that we, that we were supposed to be doing district-wide was Waterford, and that was sort of a TK or a K at that time, through sort of second grade program. Cleveland was doing it with fidelity, other schools sort of started implementing it, I don't know that they ever did it with much fidelity.
Right.
I don't know if anybody is doing Waterford at all anymore, and I don't know if we're essentially looking at this and comparing it to, I, I, you know, this is an intervention program, is it compared to having no intervention program?
That's correct. We want to compare it to what you just stated about Waterford. I know when I showed up at McKinley, there were still some teachers at the site that were utilizing the Waterford lab at the time and the software, but I could tell you, as a principal, it was, I wasn't sure, I wasn't aware of where the program came from, what our, our commitment was. I can tell you, as a principal at the time, I didn't have a great commitment to the program, I wasn't sure what it did, I just knew that some teachers really liked it. District-wide, I can tell you, that was the same, same thing, site to site. Some sites really utilized it, some sites didn't. We have not evaluated the Waterford program. That's something we'll be talking about in the near future, once Dr. Guillermo Juan gets some time, but this is something we're going to be comparing to all the other sites that don't have Imagine Learning.
Because I just imagine, I imagine that they all have something that they're doing.
Because I just imagine, I imagine that they all have something that they're doing, and it'd be great to know what they're doing. If you're not interfering and saying you're not allowed to do any sort of intervention, which I assume we wouldn't want to do, the schools, each of the schools thinks that they're doing something for their students. And so it'd be really helpful, because there may be variability. It may be that there is some school that's put together some localized intervention program that is quite effective. And so it would be great to have the data shown in that way, and not just a sort of an aggregate against the district when the schools are all doing such different things.
Right. And that was one of the challenges that I know Dr. Guillermo Juan and I spoke to, because there are different things going on through the district. United Way funds a couple of different programs, like Lexia and Reading Plus and what have you, and there are some sites that are utilizing that program. But we're also evaluating those. We're hoping, at this point, that we'll be able to bring forth an evaluation of those other programs, those other literacy programs, of Lexia, Reading Plus, and I can't recall what the other one is.
We'll have the list for you.
Okay, thanks.
But we have to get that in here.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Anything else? Nope, thank you. Would be interested in the results, that's for sure.
As will I, thank you.
At this time, we'll go back to E9, Approval of Purchase Order Report for April 8th through April 21st. Ms. Idelson?
Yes, I just had a question. There seems to be a lot of investment in Chromebooks. It looks like, like 150 Chromebooks between Santa Barbara High School, La Cumbre, Junior High, and Dos Pueblos. And this is a deviation from iPads. And I just want to understand, is, are we not so sure about iPads, or?
No, 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 no. Alls we've done is put forth a pilot for iPads in four of our schools, and we've allowed our, the rest of our schools to make their decisions on how best to meet the needs of their students until we get the results of our iPad pilot.
Okay, so we're mixing formats, basically?
Yep.
And are these teachers requesting Chromebooks specifically for purposes that wouldn't be well-suited by iPads, or? I just want to understand.
The Chromebooks are being used, are really good at doing specific things. They're great as windows to the internet, which is what they're primarily being used for at our schools, so for running things like Dreambox and other programs that are strictly web-based.
Right, okay. So, and the numbers of, it looks like, let's see, I'm, about 60,000 invested in the Chromebooks. And, okay, I just want to understand, you know, is this a direction that we're going differently than iPads, or just a supplement, a choice, basically?
I, no, it's not a different direction. We've always said the same thing, that Chromebooks are really good at doing specific things. They're really good at allowing kids quick access to the internet, if that's all they're going to do, or writing a Google Doc, for instance. And so school sites are purchasing them to replace labs, so instead of buying all-new desktop computers, they're spending, you know, a quarter of that amount of money to create mobile labs, which free up space for other uses, and at the same time allow us to just really simply move the lab to the students rather than take the students to the lab.
And so, and these would remain at school? They're not going?
Yeah, these are, these-
Okay.
That's a fundamental difference that you've just identified between what the Chromebooks we're currently doing versus what our iPad pilots are.
Okay. And would these be usable for the Smarter Balance tests also?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to understand-
Good question.
Where they were going. Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve Purchase Order Report for April 8th, 2015, through April 21st, 2015.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in papers, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, coming events. I think Dr. Cash said most of them in his reports. Anybody have anything to add? We are taking probably 40 students to the UCSB Economic Forecast Project on Thursday morning. It looks like there might be two or three extra tickets if any of you want one. It's 8:30 till 11:30. But each of our four high schools are taking about 10 students each. Those are all donated by the UCSB Economic Forecast Project. Future agenda items. Mr. Limon, you asked for something, I recall, what, that you would like?
Yeah, just summer school more broadly, I don't even-
No, okay.
-know if it's an agenda item, but-
No, okay. Okay, anything else? Let's go home.
See you next week.